Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, February 12th. We are meeting today. It's going to be a good day. I can't get the words out. On the traditional share throughout Squamish Nation. Hafal, Swalen, P'luutmuu, Blax, Spohomish, Awaua. A motion to adopt the agenda. By Councilor Rufford, Secretary of Council Stoner, all those in favor. Those who should carry it. So this morning is really focused on economic development. We have invited our M.C., Pamela Goldsmith-Jones, who should be joining us at some point. Not sure what the weather was like down in Westman, but we believe she'll be here shortly. So she'll join us at the table. But we'll turn it over to Kate Mulligan, our Economic Development Officer, to take us through our sector strategy and then about development 101, which is part of Council's presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Kate Mulligan, Economic Development Officer for the district. And I have two agenda items. The first one being the sector prioritization. The sector prioritization is work that we've conducted really since the endorsement of the 2017 to 2019 Action Plan in June of 2017, if I remember correctly. And the goal of the sector prioritization is to identify priority industries that propel growth for our local economy and align to our strategic goals. And it's very timely that I'm coming to council with the new strategic plan that council launched. Was it the 22nd of January?
It's around there.
Something around there. And this is very timely because in order to meet the three objectives as well the overarching goal, it'll be very helpful to receive council's insight and feedback in terms of the sectors and the prioritization of those sectors as we move forward. So I thought I'd just give you an overview of what we've done so far. In 2018, we received funding through Invest in Canada Community Grant. Basically, what it was was analysis as it pertains to foreign direct investment. However, we use that sort of for broader sector analysis. And what we received out of that was rich data analysis that looked at the province performance, the national performance, and international performance as it pertains to sectors. And then also a dive or an in-depth look at how those sectors' performance relate to Squamish specifically. We also did a lot of our own data analysis throughout the past year and a half so that we have a really clear understanding of our sectors, including tourism, manufacturing, recreation technology, clean energy. And so building on that, we actually undertook a values-based assessment of not only from a data perspective, but how do these potential sectors fit within the framework of our values, our vision as a community? So we use the OCP as a way to gauge that and understand sort of the relevance to our community specifically. So that brings us to today. I'm going to present our assessment as well as our recommendations for moving forward. And this is an opportunity for council to weigh in and provide feedback in terms of the direction that we're going. From there, the plan is in 2019 to complete a comprehensive sector and FDI strategy. We received additional funding for direct investment. We received additional funding through ICCI, the federal government, for up to $25,000. And then in combination with funding received through batching funding received through the district, we plan to undertake a comprehensive sector plan and FDI plan. From there, we plan to obviously implement, but most importantly, measure our performance of the plan that we're putting in place using Open Data, our Open Data Framework project that is also running in parallel with this process. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about what the findings were as it relates to the sectors themselves. We know that the Canadian economy is running or the B.C. economy is running at near potential. In fact, the B.C. economy has been performing better than any of the other provinces in Canada. We're going to see some slowing growth in the near term, in particular, related to our housing market. As well, you know, we're facing some uncertainty in terms of global trade environments, in terms of the China and Canadian trade environment. We're unsure where that's going to go. But really, we're still doing quite well in terms of growth. We have some very large traded sectors. These are the largest traded industries in British Columbia. They include educational services, manufacturing, professional scientific and technical services, and transportation and warehousing. And B.C. service-producing industry accounts for 1.8 million B.C. jobs. That's a 10% increase over 2013. And this really points to a significant increase in knowledge-based employment. So in terms of the work that we did, we decided to look at high-level sectors that showed real growth potential for British Columbia and nationally. And also that were producing positive economic results globally. We looked at eight different sectors. They included film, digital media, ICT, wireless, clean technology, other technologies such as ocean tech, agritech, recreation technology, knowing that that is of keen interest for Squamish, as well as forest products and innovation, natural resources exploration. And what we did is we looked at what is that B.C. or international potential? What kind of existing industry activity is taking place in Squamish today or in B.C.? We also looked at what assets do we have? So what does our workforce look like? Is this workforce complementary to growth? We also looked at what innovation is happening in our Squamish ecosystem or in near regions such as Vancouver? We looked at what major developments are occurring here regionally as well as in proximity to our market. And we also looked at supply chain opportunities. So where are there supply chain gaps? Where are we importing, you know, the workers and the firms that need to actually produce these services or goods for our local economy? And in addition to that, we looked at what unique assets do we have? What makes us truly distinct? We did receive local stakeholder input through in-depth interviews as well as a focus group that we conducted with the Squamish Economic Steering Group and additional members from working groups. And then finally, as I mentioned, we did align all of this to the OCP and make sure that the sectors that we'd be recommending to move forward with would complement our vision and values and align with them. So there's a handout. It's right here. And this is really just to support discussion. But these were some of the findings that were a result of our analysis, summarized into sector profiles. And this covers the eight sectors. Obviously, you know, one page can't provide an in-depth, comprehensive profile of each sector and what considerations need to be made in terms of the growth of each sector. But this is really to serve as a snapshot. So you can hold on to this, take a look at it. I can continue with the presentation, but I thought that this would serve well for questions as we proceed. So this is the proposed ecosystem. And the proposed ecosystem is made up of traded sectors. So in terms of our economic profile, sectors like construction and healthcare and public services and social services are actually really, really significant in terms of employment. However, they're not traded sectors. So for the purposes of this analysis, we really looked at traded sectors. And what came out of this was core sectors and enabling sectors. Core sectors are sectors that are foundational to our economy. They provide a significant amount of employment for our local region as well as there's a high level of firms. And enabling sectors can either be core sectors or emerging sectors. And those sectors are sectors that help propel other growth areas, so other industries and sectors. And those include, for example, high-technology creative industries, education. What came out of the review were these emerging target themes. And emerging target themes are themes where perhaps we don't yet have a huge number of firms or generating a huge amount of employment. However, we definitely have promise to in terms of our unique assets around our workforce, the provincial and national and international outlook, obviously, some unique assets that we have perhaps in terms of our geography, location, and other sectors and how they link to these emerging target themes. And so I'm just going to go through what the emerging target themes include. So green economy is a combination of industries that fit under different sectors. They're not all under one particular sector, but they've been themed as green economy. They include green building. So they're linked to building materials, especially wood. And they reflect the output of the data analysis on construction, engineering, and drafting. So we actually have a very significant workforce base around construction, engineering, and drafting. We also have a lot of history in terms of green building and our evolution from forestry into this industry. Also, efficient technologies and the Internet of Things and construction technologies. We could group these together, but we decided to kind of separate them. The efficient technology side is really ones that are focused on, you know, using our local assets in clean tech, whether that's workforce or firms that already exist, and really growing a cluster of efficient technology companies in Squamish. And that could focus on computer system design, digital imaging, and it can link to smart city development, something that I know Squamish has been keen on. The construction technology really is to help drive efficiency in the technology industry. And that includes surveying dratted drones, tracking sensors. And it really links to our local assets in the clean tech, construction, and engineering environment. So again, that's sizable workforce and altitude. Wasted fuel and alternative energy, we're already moving in that direction. We've got companies like Carmen Engineering doing really innovative work in that space. We also have a fairly significant forestry resource. And biomass is becoming definitely on the radar of not only the B.C., but in general, the Canadian economy and international economy. So we have lots of opportunity in that space. Agri-food. Agri-food is really, it's an important consideration for every community, in particular, urban farming and how we evolve. And why it's been put under the green economy is because it really relates to our local sustainable food chain. And the idea that our local sustainable food chain can serve our region as we grow, but also provide economic opportunity that extends beyond our region. The outdoor recreation theme includes digital entertainment and film. So that's really media that takes advantage of our local natural assets. So that's, you know, theme-based media that basically uses our tourism industry, our recreation technology and recreation assets to propel itself forward. Performance-based apparel design and recreation sports technology really again is an extension of who we are as the adventure capital and being hardwired for adventure. It really takes advantage of the tourism sector. Obviously, the huge amount of tourism traffic that goes up and down the Cedar Sky Corridor. It also becomes a center of excellence for R&amp;D. And so those, along with the marketing and digital media space, really creates that outdoor recreation theme and is an extension of our tourism industry. And then we looked at this in terms of how it links to the visions and values through the OCP and in particular, council's four-year strategic plan. We looked at, you know, obviously, the impact that it would have on economy and local jobs. But we also recognized that the two themes also play into other areas of the plan. In particular, the planet and our environment. So through that process, we reviewed whether or not the opportunity as it presented was supporting these objectives that council has and OCP areas and whether they were like instrumental barriers. And we feel that those themes are definitely themes where we can stand apart as a community and also have the capacity to grow. So the goal is to move forward with a comprehensive sector plan. But in the meantime, we're already doing work that supports the growth of these target themes. So really, this is a roadmap on how we work with these various sectors. So our core sectors, tourism, transportation, forestry, and enabling sectors, education, high-technology, and creative industries, are grouped together simply because we feel that all of the sectors are enabling in some way. However, some of the sectors are not necessarily core yet, as I mentioned. So our goal with tourism, transportation, and forestry would be to sustain them. That would be conducting business retention and expansion efforts, making sure that we have a positive business climate, working on training and innovation, investment readiness and new market entry, and productivity and competitiveness of these firms. However, the enabling, so more on the education, high-technology, and creative industry side, and those two emerging target themes of green economy and outdoor recreation, would be really focused on not only business retention and expansion, but new investment, new firms, and employment gains. So that's where we're suggesting that those sectors and themes would fall under our nurture and excel. And that's where we would place, I would say, a significant portion of our investment attraction efforts. And there's already momentum happening. So right now, there's lots of funding for obviously, green economy. It's a, you know, it's a big focus of our federal provincial government. There is innovation funding so that for commercialization purposes in many fields related to green economy. In addition, there's lots of education opportunities linked to the green economy, including the Clean V.C. Plan, as well as Creative V.C. has many programs. The provincial and federal government have programs to support creative industries in the media and film space. And then we also have the Tech Supercluster, which I think is also a really important note. That's a really exciting opportunity for Squamish because it's actually here in B.C. And if we can link to that innovation and benefit through that, I think that's a great opportunity for us.
Kate, can you tell us where the superclusters are?
Okay. I can, sorry, I'm just gonna. So the superclusters, I just wanted to read off my notes here. Digital tech, protein industries, adventure manufacturing, AI, and ocean superclusters are pan across Canada. And the federal government is investing in these superclusters, oh, sorry, in these superclusters so that they can link R&amp;D research, education, academia with industry and actually drive innovation and compel innovation. So B.C. was fortunate enough to have the Tech Supercluster here in B.C., whereas, for instance, in Atlantic Canada, they have one focused on ocean sciences. So given that tech is such a broad spectrum, the Tech Supercluster not only deals with, you know, computer applications and supercomputing, but it actually is looking at solutions around clean energy and creative industries. So it's a fairly broad supercluster and it really aligns nicely with the recommended themes of green economy and creative, or outdoor recreation, which includes creative industries. Local momentum. So we are already doing lots of work in terms of supporting the green economy and outdoor recreation growth as well as supporting the traditional sectors, including tourism, manufacturing, forestry that Squamish has been known for. One of the programs that we're working on right now is the Industry Innovation Program with SFU, FCAT, so the Faculty of Communication Arts and Technology, as well as Quest and the Chamber. And now we have SD48 that's joined in the partnership, which is really exciting. So what we're doing there is we're going to be working in a K to 16 space to map the creative industries. We're working on our one-pager project plan right now. And what we've figured out is that probably the best way to go about this is take advantage of some of the assets we already have in Squamish, notably, the extensive woodworking, design, and textile and art facilities that How Sound does. So we're actually exploring the opportunity to create a duocredit with How Sound Secondary and SFU, which is really exciting. And hopefully, Quest will also be able to participate in that way. So that's one place that we're working in that space. And so what our results will be is to map the creative industry through a storytelling of Squamish's design space and then find out where we have gaps and look at how we fill those gaps, whether that's through maker space or whether that's through educational programs or a combination thereof. TEPTA 101 is coming to Squamish March 14th. And all of council has been invited as well as the broader tech community stakeholders. And the province will be delivering this workshop. And the goal will be to understand the technology sector in general and define it for Squamish as well as map it. So that will also provide us with the gaps in terms of where we need to go to help develop the potential of our tech sector. The Accelerator Programming, that's targeted expansion efforts that's ongoing for high-potential sectors. So in 2019, our goal is to try to work with these sectors to provide opportunities so that they can propel, whether that's investment or scaling through partnership and facilitating their growth, perhaps through trade shows. So that's just some of the work that we're doing there or plan to do in 2019. Employment space modeling is really important in terms of understanding our ecosystem and what barriers and gaps are presenting for a particular industry. So that work, we're actually undertaking with SFU. We've already kicked off the initial phase of that. We're working with SFU's Big Data Team and as well being supported by urban planning at SFU. And the goal will be to inventory the employment space, land and space, as well as create a forecast model which forecasts supply and demand of employment space. So that's actually underway. Sector Impact Study as part of our Open Data Program. We are looking at creating a methodology and approach for measuring the impact of promised sectors and important sectors to our economy. We're working in partnership with the Chamber and Tourism Squamish. And Tourism Squamish has indicated that it's time for a new impact study. The last one that they released was in 2007. So our first industry that we're looking, or sector that we're looking at is in tourism, which will also provide some perspective in terms of those themed outdoor recreation target industries. And then SLRD was Squamish. They're leading an initiative to do an agrifood plan. Sarah McJanet is working on that file. I'm not sure if she's here. She's not. And essentially, that's going to help sort of understand how we can grow that sector regionally. So there's lots of things that are happening already. But what the comprehensive sector plan will do is, you know, confirm our hypotheses around where we think there's promise and give us marching orders in terms of how do we focus our efforts, streamline our efforts, and actually deliver results as it pertains to our local economy. So this is what our sector plan outcomes are hoping to achieve. We're going to have in-depth profiles of each of these sectors. We're going to understand the barriers and opportunities that facilitate growth. We're going to understand how we can better market and position our regional economy for these promised sectors and specifically, not just in general, like our brand, but what are the specific wants, needs of these industries and how do we actually deliver on those? And also, you know, where are we going to attract investment from? And then finally, resource allocation, which is really important in terms of, you know, how much can we do and when can we accomplish this by? Because there's a lot of sectors that present opportunity. However, the reality of that is, you know, we need to have a plan that really sets out something that is achievable as opposed to, you know, I would say, trying to run in a direction but really spinning the wheels. So the goal will be to take the plan and break it down into manageable chunks so that we can actually achieve that. That may mean that we have to concentrate on particular sectors at particular times or put our effort across a select number of sectors that are included as promised sectors for growth. But this plan will really help lay that out.
I've got a question from Councilor.
Yeah, right now.
Oh, here we are. So could you go back, I guess, now to two slides, please? Yes, that one. So when you talk about mapping an industry, what does that actually mean? I mean, you're looking at a speed map and there's one here and there's one here. You could have one here. Is it something physical like that or?
No, that's a good, that's a good question through you, the mayor. The mapping actually is looking at the ecosystem. So what's the supply chain, the value chain look like within a particular industry? And it also is going to help uncover what barriers and opportunities present within a particular industry or sector. So mapping is not a geographical or physical mapping in sense, it's just really developing what the ecosystem looks like.
Do you have an example of that, Kate?
An example? So I know that in the previous Industry Innovation Program, ICCI partnership development, I had included an example of what the UK did in terms of their creative industries mapping. And essentially, what they did is they were able to define what are the true industries that are operating within their community and what are those industries propelled by in terms of academia, in terms of R&amp;D, and what networks exist? So there's a lot of formal and informal networks. And through this mapping process, we'll be able to capture, hopefully, both of those. I think an example would be, you know, I know that the tech industry in Squamish is, you know, rather small. However, tech is incorporated into so many different areas and industries. And so it's not necessarily, can be defined on its own. It's not mutually exclusive. I would say that it's incorporated into most of the industries that we work in. The mapping of the tech industry will actually link what are those other industries working in tech spaces and how do they relate back to the technology sector? And it will also find informal networks. So for instance, I know the Common, which is a co-working space in Squamish, is focused really on the growth of tech firms. And I think that that's an example of perhaps a network that we need to understand better and how can we actually take that network and use it to help grow and propel? So that's, those are just examples of the mapping So that's, those are just examples of the mapping and how it would work.
Follow me?
Yeah, I think I understand that now. So if I was using an example in the resource industry, for example, if you look at blogging or forest industry, so you're mapping everything from where the tree is, so it gets to be incorporated into a piece of furniture, for example?
Absolutely.
And all the different suppliers that have to come into the supply chain and where that happens?
And also other sectors and industries that benefit from it. Because not, you know, they're not on their own, like in terms of the forestry industry and wood industry is not necessarily on its own. It's actually part of a larger ecosystem. The tourism industry and the forestry industry actually play hand in hand. You look at a lot of the forest lands and the trails that have been developed through that, and how tourism can benefit from it, and vice versa. So I think looking at the ecosystem from that perspective, as opposed to these individual siloed sectors, because that's not really how it works.
And then employment space modeling. We have an employment land strategy.
That's right.
Is this something different than that?
So our employment lands strategy was from 2015, and there was a number of different recommendations that were contained within it. And they included keeping an active inventory of employment space. So that's one aspect of what we're trying to do in 2019 and beyond, is keep that evergreen inventory. But it also talked about the need to be able to create more employment land and space. And a lot of recommendations were implemented by planning with respect to zoning. However, there's still lots of work to be done. And as our population continues to grow, and industry has particular needs, and our economy shifts, this forecasting model will allow us to basically peer into a crystal ball, so that we can have some understanding of where we're going in terms of supply and demand. And then from that, creating, creating sort of our guiding principles. What do we do to incent more supply, or maybe restrict supply? I don't think that would be a problem around employment space, but definitely a consideration. So that's the goal of the forecast model.
And what might be see that? Is that expected, do you think, this year?
The goal is to do this in 2019. SFU said that they think this isn't a totally achievable in 2019. It was great. We met with a team of four very diverse backgrounds at SFU. We're working, economic development is working on this project in conjunction with planning, and also G I, Open Data GIS, so IT. So Dan and Asia are part of the project team. And it looks very promising that we'll have a working model. And when we ask for a model, it's really more the methodology and approach behind the model, as opposed to the flashy interface. However, SFU has signaled that they also might be able to deliver on the interface as well, which is very exciting.
All right. Counselor Stoner, you can answer anything.
That just answered my question, which I want to know?
If I may follow up on the employment space modeling. You've discussed, referred to methodology. Some sectors will perhaps need a different methodology. I can think of tourism, or commercial transportation, or resource industries. Their demand for land are different, presumably for modeling needs than a more, than a service sector. So perhaps there, we might, there may be more or less of a cookie cutter approach, and probably for some, less, may depend more on interviews or a different scope of fact finding. That's my notion. I wonder if you might speak to that, as to whether some sectors will need to be treated differently in a modeling methodology?
Yeah, so I think, through you the mirror, I think that in terms of how we're approaching this model, there's going to be constraints. You know, any model is not going to be perfect. It's not going to give us the perfect crystal ball. But we are already working, as I said, with the urban planning team, as well as, we also are drawing in from the, an economic background at SFU. So we have, we have somebody working from the economy side, we have somebody working from the planning side, as well as the big data and modeling side. So I think we're really going to be able to come up with a model that considers, as you mentioned, land-based needs, and also, you know, not just constraining the model to population growth here, actually looking at the model from export potential and a number of different variables that perhaps the expertise of somebody with an economic background and an economist could actually provide better insight into. So we're definitely looking at it from that perspective. I think the methodology itself, we haven't even gotten to the point where we're clear on what data inputs we have. So that's sort of where we are today, is we're in the data discovery period, where we're actually looking at what data does Swamish have that's going, like our own data that's going to inform a model development or methodology? And then the big data team is also looking with the economists and urban planning, what other data is out there that we don't know about, that we maybe don't have access to ourselves, that they can actually use to be able to form the supply and demand model? And the other thing we've requested from SFU is an approach that could be applied across municipalities, that it wouldn't just be an approach that would benefit Swamish itself. And so looking at it from, you know, just in terms of a barrier of using the model from a data perspective, what should we be considering that will have a larger impact in terms of model development? So that's kind of how we've approached the project.
Do you have a follow up?
Yes, you've just been speaking to across municipalities. It raises the issue of collaboration with other municipalities, including in our corridor. The most, the newly revised regional growth strategy, in contrast to the previous one, has in fact removed reference to a regional economic strategy. The previous one did have this and spoke to it, but the neater one, or apparently, anyway, it's been removed. Can you speak to your collaboration with other economic development officers and related people in our corridor?
So we are working with the province right now to actually have a meeting that, I think it's planned for next month, I believe, with Pemberton, Whistler, SLRD, and Swamish. That's going to focus on economic development and opportunities for collaboration. The province is supposed to be organizing this. Wendy Ko, she's the regional manager for economic development. So at this point, we're waiting for her to take the lead, so that we can start working closer together. I think in general, there's a desire to work with other municipalities, but how other regions are set up quite differently in terms of economic development and their capacity to deliver it. So, you know, it's not, it's not always straightforward.
Thank you. I'll put your name on this. Counselor Peddyl?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you can speak to, in our assessments, how we're factoring in, or if we're factoring in, climate change? And the reason I bring that up is particularly important for forestry, tourism, and agrifood in terms of, it brings a lot of new opportunities. But even stuff that was a possibility five years ago, and maybe seeming a great opportunity five years ago, and five years from now, is just not going to be possible. And I think we're talking about significant shifts. And one of the reasons to bring that up, to the degree we're using big data and analytics, that really tends to use past experience to inform future decisions and sort of assume that we'll follow similar patterns. But we have this sort of new thing, which is kind of drastically changing the landscape, and may mean, you know, those past experiences aren't as informative going forward as they may have been in the past. So how are, you know, are we sort of looking at that in any way?
So just to clarify the question, you're wondering, like, we're heavily relying on past performance through data analytics to map a, look at a course in terms of moving forward, in terms of our sector focus?
It sounds like that's a significant component of what you're talking about. And so, you know, are we trying to adjust for what we're seeing from climate change science and that kind of thing?
Absolutely. I mean, we're looking at a situational analysis through the data analysis that we did, was looking at the outlook of where we're going. That incorporates, not just in terms of an economic outlook, but obviously, the outlook incorporates where the world's going in terms of climate change. And that's why we're seeing emerging technologies around clean energy, around clean technology, coming up as such a big opportunity, in particular for this region. Canada's a leader in clean technology and clean energy. And BC is definitely leading the charge right now. We've got seven companies in BC named to the top 100 clean tech companies in 2018. I think the new list just came out for 2019. We're definitely strategically positioned to take advantage of the opportunity afforded from that, but also make a difference in terms of the climate change. And there's a real desire, I think, in this community, in terms of our values and vision, and as it wants to climate change, to do that. I don't know if that quite answers your question.
If, you know, for things like, are we doing analysis, like, for example, with the increase in forest fires and that, to continue, and the change in temperature, and dry forests, are maybe we're looking at a period of needing to drop, cut block sizes, for example? That sort of risk analysis, are we?
So we'll be looking at that as we get into a comprehensive plan. I'm not going to make recommendations for what the industry should do. Instead, we're going to be looking at recommendations in terms of what Swamish should do to work with these industries to propel growth. So essentially, the comprehensive plan is going to look at different, you know, what's evolving in these particular sectors, and how do we work within that, I guess, ecosystem? And so for instance, when you talk about the forestry sector and advanced wood product sector, we're going to be looking at the situational analysis, and what's the forest and wood product sector going to look like in five, 10, 15 years? And then it will be up to us to decide how we want to impact growth with a particular sector for Swamish. Does that, is that a better answer?
Counselor Reese?
Well, thank you. It's just back to that conference or collaboration with the province and the other municipalities. Is that intended to be at a staff level, or is it like official involvement?
So the province suggested at the onset, just to have a staff level collaboration, just to discuss what are we working on today, and whether or not there are any particular opportunities that presented to be able to work together. Things like employment space modeling, or perhaps industry mapping, are there best practices that we can share? And really just a touch point between the staff. So there was no intention at, initially, to bring it to a political level, but that's not to say that there's no desire.
Other questions? It's very interesting.
You have described transportation as an enabling, an enabling sector, certainly identifiable as such here, but it's not a, one of the sectors that's highlighted in this package. Are you, I forgot the label you've given to these identified sectors. We, our transportation infrastructure needs some help in certain areas. We have a local exporter, or, well, potentially exporters, West Coast Outbuildings that are shipping their products to downtown Vancouver to load onto barges there. And so my question is, will the approach that you've outlined be able to capture that infrastructure gap, in that it is not represented here? Transportation sector's not represented in oceans technology, for example? Just so that we're not losing sight of those types of infrastructure gaps?
Absolutely. So the handouts that you received are the sectors that we looked at sort of for future growth. We have established sectors that are vital to our local economy, which include our extensive transportation sector. I would say that that's one of our significant assets for many of these target themes that we're talking about, in particular, advanced wood products, forestry, and some of the other sectors that are already showing performance value here. The way that we'll work with transportation, we definitely see it as an enabler, is through our comprehensive plan, determining where there's gaps in terms of that infrastructure. It's not just transportation infrastructure where we may see gaps. We may see gaps in terms of our broadband capabilities, and that is where we will address those. So we'll say, in order to grow this particular sector, we need to make sure that the strong foundation is in place, this business structure, or business infrastructure is in place. There's some, you know, big ticket items in terms of business infrastructure that I'll get into in the Council 101, in particular around housing. All of those are going to show up across the sectors, but some are going to have a greater impact than others in terms of, like, some sectors will be, have a greater impact in terms of how housing will affect it. So we're going to be looking at that in the comprehensive plan. We've already earmarked a few areas where we need to work on particular infrastructure as it relates to education and transportation and housing.
Hi, Counselor Stoner. My name's on the list, and I'm glad to contribute.
And so one of the things that comes up as a threat in seven out of eight of these sectors is access to talent. And I'm assuming that the accelerator program is helping potentially to fill that gap a little bit, so just curious, one, how that program is being received, and if there's anything else in the short and medium term that we can foresee on how we try to help support that gap at any time?
Access to talent is something that all of BC actually, nationally, we're facing. We have a talent shortage projected in almost every single industry, from forestry, design, technology, engineering. And so that's why you're going to see it come up time and time again in terms of threats. We're working at the grassroots level with SD48, SFU, Quest, to try to create momentum from K to 16. But we also have the need for infrastructure in Swamish that supports propelling our sector growth. So that, in my mind, is one of the key pieces or key focal areas that economic development needs to work on in 2019 and beyond. We simply need more post-secondary access, but not only just, you know, the academia side, but the R and D and innovation side. So I think that by connecting, by growing that ecosystem, and connecting industry to academia, R and D, innovation, that's really going to help propel our talent profile in terms of what workforce is available here in Swamish. And at the same time, we also need to look at places where we are experiencing leakage, and how can we fill those in? So in terms of who's actually leaving our community to go work in industries that we could otherwise have working here, how do we actually achieve that? So that'll be some of the work that we need to do.
Kate, can you go back to a diagram that situates these?
Yeah, this one here?
So these are in a core?
These are, this is, this is what we looked at.
This is what you looked at?
This is what we looked at, which is included in this package.
Okay, so this is what we looked at, and then we took that and narrowed it further?
That's right.
To the next?
Yeah, to this.
That, okay. And can we go to the green common one? Sorry, I'm just trying to get all these layers. So one of the things that I'm curious about, as we could see back, is that our smart cities application was all around the circular, and the opportunity to start focusing on that. And I'm not really seeing that reflected in these sectors. And maybe that emerges once we do a full piece, but, you know, when I look at natural resources exploration and technologies, to build off Counselor Peddyl's earlier comment, I think the direction we need to go is recovery and reusing, rather than keep mining or keep extracting.
They're, they're not included as one of the target industries?
No, I know that. But in terms of, you know, trying to anticipate what is coming, so where does the circular economy fit into this? And, you know, we talk about, even when we're talking about zero waste in our landfill, how are we deconstructing buildings so that material can be reused in terms of construction technologies? And waste to fuel is also part of a circular economy piece. So I'm just trying to, how do we take what we learned from the smart cities application and put it into this sector strategy as well?
I think definitely the waste to fuel and alternative energy is a place where that was part of the smart cities application, in terms of how do we actually take something that we've got, in terms of a resource, and turn it into something more positive for the environment? So biomass is a great example of circular economy. And in terms of efficient technologies, they can actually propel a circular economy. One of the, one of the ideas was very simplistic, not necessarily a technology solution in the circular economy, but it focused on creating a marketplace for waste. And we're already starting to look at that and explore that. I'm working with Shannon, in terms of creating an industry platform for industries to be able to look at the waste that they're producing, and how that waste can actually be incorporated into the value chain of other industries. So I think, I think the green economy theme is going to capture the circular economy. It's not necessarily going to create a circular economy without a circular economy plan in Swamish. It's kind of like a supporting element of the circular economy, as opposed to a direct, a directive onto a zone. But there is a zero waste plan for Swamish. So making sure that we're dovetailing into that plan, I think it will really, really kick. So making sure that we're dovetailing into that plan, I think, will be really, really key.
I can see how a lot of our, um, master planning sort of fits into this. Whether it's just from natural asset identification and not threatening those.
Yeah.
But also our zero waste plan would drive, um, the tighter we make that zero waste plan, it actually could drive innovation in some of this green economy sector.
Agreed.
And that's where I think government policy can help to drive innovation. Because we tighten screws a little bit, people have to come up with solutions. Of course, the other side of that is you can't tighten them too fast or you go back to the old code.
Mm-hmm.
That's really, my other question is, how do we know who is here? So one of the things that I know is that a large percentage of our workforce is commuting to the city. How do we know who they are and what they do and what skills and talents are actually living here now that we could help them?
So we've been using data to inform that. We have a few different sources. Uh, one of the sources that's most readily available and updated is through MZ Analyst. Uh, what that does is it provides a profile of occupations here in Swamish. Um, and it's pretty detailed. Um, we have them by NOCs, so the national occupation codes, as well as NAICS. So looking at it from an industry perspective. We also have average wages, median wages, so that's, that's quite informing. Um, we also ran custom census tabulations, um, from the 2016 census. And that actually, uh, provided us in-depth, uh, the size of our workforce, what industry or occupation that they're employed in, where they're working. So whether they're working from home. So we actually know who's working from home by occupation. Um, who's working at a bricks and mortar or usual place of work? And whether or not that's within our, our CSD, so within Swamish, or commuting outside of Swamish. So we have that information. And in addition, we also have, um, individuals that are working with no fixed address and what their occupations are. So, uh, we used all of that data to help inform, uh, the direction we're taking. We were able to actually size, um, the, the occupation and industry, um, jobs for Swamish as they pertain to particular professions, which was quite helpful in this analysis. We definitely over-index in, um, individuals working in professional, scientific and technical fields. I think the last time I looked, um, there was more than a thousand. So that was, that was quite informing in terms of where, you know, where our workforce, um, could benefit from growing the number of firms and the size of employment in these particular industries. Uh, so that was very helpful. Uh, in addition, we have the profile of, uh, the education profile. So, uh, you know, what education, uh, individuals living or workforce, um, living here in Swamish have been trained in. They're not necessarily working in those areas, but it gives us a pretty good indication in terms of the skills that our workforce has.
Thank you.
Councilor Petgill? So, uh, to that first, uh, comment slash question that ties to Mayor Elliott's first comment. Um, I guess, you know, I, I hope there's a, uh, increasing realization that the idea of unlimited growth in a finite world, I mean, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And so my alarm bells do tend to go off a little bit when I hear growth, 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 growth. And, you know, in some of what you talked about though, it seemed that it was more of an increasing experience and service when you're talking about growth, which maybe is quite reasonable. And I'm just wondering how much of a lens we're putting on, um, you know, depending on growth of consumption and consumables versus better experience, better service, that kind of thing. And, uh, so I'm wondering if you can speak to that? And maybe my comment would be, the better we can define growth and maybe be a little bit cautious about how we use growth in some of this, uh, would make sense to me.
I would agree. I think growth is not necessarily, um, maybe I haven't properly defined how, how, um, our department is looking at growth. We're looking at, you know, the actual well-being and quality of life of the citizens and residents that live here. Um, and that's really looking to, uh, looking at, you know, what is the composition of our, of our industries today and our sectors today? And do those support, um, our objectives around quality of life? And I think what's, um, what's becoming evident is as we shift to a more knowledge-based, um, uh, resident workforce, we're also, we're also experiencing, um, we're also experiencing a, a gap in terms of firms, um, and jobs available for the workforce. So it's maybe a bit of a shifting of, of, um, our growth in terms of making sure that we're growing in the right places. And really looking at it through the lens of not just, um, you know, financial profitability, but also through, um, the environment and through social, um, pillars as well. So looking at economics, uh, social and sustainability pillars is really, really key, I think, in the work that we're going to be doing. And that's where it comes into aligning the vision and values of our community as much as possible with our growth trajectory. Do you have a follow?
Uh, should we insert a second thing?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, so, you know, I, in the past, I really felt that, my sense was that Swamish was kind of looking at bringing Mike Hill and just kind of looking to follow along. And this feels a lot more proactive to me. And we're really trying to find our opportunities and make them happen. Sort of define our destiny, which does resonate a lot with me. But I was watching a documentary, um, on the weekend, which made me question myself. It was about techno in Berlin and it's become a hub for techno music. And the, the, one of the key factors for that was when the Berlin Wall fell, there was all these vacant bond of buildings of all this pretty space. And people started to legal clubs first and then they, they got formal clubs and studios came up and all of these things. Uh, and now there's major software companies in the industry. There was a whole, you know, just amazing ecosystem. And so there, what happened, it was just sort of really pretty cheap, undefined, you know, sort of no rules, no regulation. And something amazing just came out of it. And so it made me question a little bit this whole idea of driving, being very specific about like who wanted to make these things happening. So I, I almost find myself a little bit conflicted right now. Especially as in Vancouver, we know affordable, usable, flexible spaces incredibly constrained and that's an opportunity here to just be really open. I don't know, and I'm sort of torn myself on that.
That's a great question. And, and hold that, we'll talk about the zoning by law, actually. Because that is the tension between lots of rules and no rules. Um, so I'm just going to pause because, uh, MP Poundwell's been feeling good. Helen, I've got a seat for you up at the table here if you'd like to join us.
Sure.
Uh, next is Councilor Petgill. Welcome.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
Uh, so we're just talking about our sector strategy. And, um, we've got a couple of emerging target themes. So there's this one around the green economy and the next one, Kate.
It's outdoor recreation?
It's.
Oh, sorry.
Outdoor recreation. Just to bring you up to speed, we've got some foundational sectors, but we're looking at these two and just having a dialogue about how that, uh, starts to fit into Swamish in the future. Um, so happy for you to ask some questions, but also weigh into the conversation. And these folks might have some questions for you.
Sure.
Um, but I'll let Kate address Councilor Petgill's question.
Um, rules versus no rules, open spaces. Um, I actually, you know, I hear what you're saying. I think, I think the, there are some things that, you know, Swamish can do to try to improve, um, access to space. But when you started the, the description of the documentary, you said, you know, there was a whole bunch of space made available. And then there was a number of circumstances that led to the evolution of techno. Essentially, we're doing the same thing. We're trying to set the stage for industries to grow. But we're trying to pick industries that are going to help support things like our cost of living, that are going to help support our vision and values as a community. Um, the risk of no rules is that, um, you know, we have industries that are highly interested in Swamish because they, they meet, um, the objectives that they're seeking, but they don't fit within the vision, um, of our community. And, uh, you know, it can be quite controversial. And also, you know, there can be some really great projects that look as though they have a lot of merit and promise. However, they can't be sustained here, um, maybe simply because of the cost of living and the lack of, um, you know, affordability for, for paying jobs. So, you know, I, I, I hear you, but I also, um, would be, I would be concerned or hesitant about, um, not trying to direct, um, the growth in one, in particular directions because I think we open up ourselves for a lot of risks. I don't know that. That's, that's my opinion of that.
When we think about the work that you're doing with SFU on sort of the analysis of employment space and, and land required, um, it makes me think about this concept of just creative space. And I know, you know, some of the best, I think it's MIT that just has building 57. What school is that? Oh, one of the big Ivy League schools, just has an empty building. People had to drill like holes in the wall and make it whenever they need to and just have sort of that maker space. But will our, um, employment land analysis, uh, look at our projected growth and try and match local jobs to our building population? So one of the things in that strategic plan, right, is about local jobs and trying to create more jobs for people so they can live and work here. So is that team looking at our population growth? And how many of those jobs actually need to exist in Swamish? And where would we put them?
We're going to be looking at the supply, like what actually is forecasted supply? So what impacts on supply? And what is the demand? And we'll be considering the sector strategy as part of the employment space development. What I feel like, uh, I'm hearing out of the conversation is more around design thinking and the need for design thinking. And I think in Swamish, we don't really have space for design thinking. Um, Quest has space for design thinking. They're doing design thinking every single day. But Swamish, from an industry perspective, hasn't formalized any, any, uh, design thinking spaces um, in combination with the district and maybe SD48 and post-secondary. And that's where we're trying to go. We're trying to create spaces for design thinking. I think there's some, um, networks that are, that are probably present. I'm guessing the common would be one network for technology around design thinking. But I think we perhaps, um, can do a better job around creating those environments for design thinking. And, and like you say, building 57, um, or just creating empty spaces for people to create, um, and propel the economy forward. But I think we, we really do need to continue with a path where we, um, kind of have an objective aligned to particular industries and sector growth. Um, otherwise, I think we do run the risk of not, of creating things that don't necessarily reflect the vision of, of who lives here.
My, my one piece of feedback on that, Kate, and what you, Councilor Hooper, is that if that model for our employment lands need is just based on our current local level of percentage of people that work locally, it won't meet our needs if we're trying to get more people working here.
It's going to reflect population growth, but it's also going to reflect on, um, where we want to go in terms of the share of those working locally.
Okay, thank you.
Does that, does that answer the question?
Yep, I just want to make sure.
Councilor Hooper.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I was wondering how, um, I love how this is all, uh, data-driven and that, and the forecasting is, is, um, seems to be sort of taking all the right things into consideration. I'm curious about the, how you feel about the quality of the data. We're looking at 2016, uh, the data being put from 2016 numbers. And we're looking for a more fulsome picture, centered in, within 2019. So maybe call it 2020. But I know if we looked outside the doors of City Hall four years ago, we're looking at a different space and how comfortable you are with, um, and how that's been factored in with your, with the partners involved in this project.
So MZ Analyst is actually forecasting data for 2018. We actually have data up to Q4 2018. In particular, we use, um, job scrapers like Talent Neuron to look at job openings. Those are Q4 2018. Um, when we look at occupational data and by industry, um, and industry data by jobs, uh, that's 2018 estimated data. The only data that we're using that's really, uh, driven by the census would be, um, a lot of our educational data. Um, and also just confirming that the MZ data, um, which is based on census is aligning. So we are using really up-to-date data, as up-to-date as we can get for a small municipality. Uh, we're in discussion with StatsCan right now. StatsCan has a new model, um, uh, in terms of service delivery. And what they're trying to do is, um, really connect at a regional and municipal level, um, better, uh, so that they can provide more timely data and also help small communities, um, use data in more constructive ways. So one of our ambitions, uh, will be to, to actually go to StatsCan. We've been invited, uh, to their downtown office, um, to workshop with them on better use of data. So I've extended that offer, um, beyond economic development because obviously has implications across the district and it's really exciting. Um, so, and they also work with SFU's big data team too. So we're kind of triangulating, which is really exciting. So that, that is the momentum, um, of our team is try to, how can we get the best quality data, the most timely data, um, and at the lowest cost? Because obviously there's a pocket, we have a piece of data. Um, our open data, uh, work that we're doing with the Chamber in Tourism Swamish in partnership with them, uh, through funding we receive through the B C Global Dividend, um, is really helping us understand, uh, what data's out there and what data is going to inform our decision-making. So that's another project that's really propelling, um, you know, where we're going from an economic development standpoint. I'm just going to offer also, I could read the definition of our themes because we, we actually have definitions which might help around, um, how they link back to a circular economy, if it's of interest.
Yeah, if you want to read those things.
I just hate reading things.
Maybe then I'll let Pamela jump in and then I've got a question for Councilor Stoner.
I thought it might be helpful for, for, um, for Pamela just because she wasn't at the really part of the presentation. So the green economy, and I'm reading this, right? The emerging green economy theme encompasses activities that aim to reduce environmental risks, ameliorate ecological, ecological shortages and support sustainable development without degrading the environment. For Swamish, the activities that emerged as priority opportunities under the green economy theme include green building, waste to fuel, alternative energies, efficient technologies, construction technologies and agri-food. So that's the green economy definition. And the emerging outdoor recreation cluster anchors in the region's strong outdoor recreation and tourism sector, crossing into technology and digital media, and includes recreation, sport, technology, marketing and digital media, digital entertainment, uh, and film and design. And development in these industries is symbi- is a symbiotic relationship with the continued and sustainable success of the tourism sector. And then although the general film and digital entertainment sector is a current strength and can attract further resources, um, such as post-production, uh, supply chain companies, the strongest value position linked, uh, that links to these activities, um, and to the hard-wired for adventure branding, um, is recreation and sports activities. So really aligning the media focus and the development of firms around recreation and sporting activities, um, that are active across our more diverse set of industries. So that's really how we would, um, connect, uh, sporting technologies, apparel design and, um, media together. So those are the definitions of the two target themes, sort of, yeah.
Any questions or thoughts, Pamela, at this point?
Well, thank you for inviting me. I really, really just wanted to come at the beginning of your term to meet. I know most of you, but I haven't met all of you before. And, uh, to let you know that, I've already met with the mayor, of course. Congratulations to all of you. Um, and looked at your strategic plan and wanted to just let you know that we keep our eye on that and our eye on fund, federal funding that relates to any of it. So, um, I think we've worked very closely in the past and looking forward to helping you drive this plan. Um, a, a couple of big things that I think we are, uh, should be working closely together on. One is, uh, transportation and the B C Transit Plan in the corridor. I think that that's come a long way in the last little while. So however, we can help, um, garner federal funding for that in support of the corridor. I keep hearing for sure, transportation and housing are key concerns here. And the other is, the federal government's put quite a bit of money, as you know, into the, um, estuary plan. And, uh, under the leadership of Edith and Jesse and those guys, um, they have been working, I believe, very constructively with Kite Borders and with the port and with Western Steagall now. But, you know, I'm far away most of the time. So, um, please just, uh, it, it seems to me that that kind of approach had, it speaks directly to what you just said in terms of industry, sport and the environment. But, um, you know, let me know if that's going well or needs help or something because we're not as, there's funding there from the federal government that we're not really at the table in a sense.
And I think that's one of those sort of visionary, possibly award-winning projects, right? In, in the long term, um, on, on that side. So I appreciate the help. I guess the one thing is that this is an election year and this council is focused on, um... outdoor recreation, green economy, adapting and mitigation to climate change. Where do you see this government's policy going around the new economy or climate change adaptation?
Well, we were farther ahead about a year ago on putting a price on pollution, as we call it. We know that generally speaking Canadians are in favor of that. But with recent changes in premiers, it's really hard. So it will be the law in Canada, I believe April 1st is when a price on pollution comes into effect. And, you know, some of the strongest leadership in the country comes from here on that. So we could really use your support from a, just from a policy perspective. And I don't expect that this is going to get any easier. You know, the leader of, against all of this would be Premier Ford. And he's super unpopular. Even the people at photo form, he's not that popular anymore. But I mean, if you can believe it, you've probably seen this in the news. But, you know, how much of our time at the local level or provincial level is spent trying to attract federal investment? And now he is saying no to all of it. So he's got mayors who want the money and qualify. And he won't let it flow. So it's, we're in a very interesting situation. And actually, kind of a fundamental question about federalism really. Because we've worked very hard to connect directly at the local level. And we respect this incredible amount of research and work that you do to make sure that we're making the right investments in affordable housing or transportation or wastewater, whatever. But of course, we have to go through the provincial government for the money to flow. That's just the way it's always been. And we're finding that that is a pet, all apparently, pet is a perhaps false assumption. But in B C, our agreement is very good. And so I don't think we will have a problem. But I would say we need to continue to articulate the importance of transitioning to a clean economy. And one lever is putting a price on pollution, it's not the only one. L N G is a big part of both the provincial government and our federal government's step towards a cleaner fuel on the way. But, and so I'm always interested in how that's going here. I can't even believe, like, I think that L N G Canada is, is probably going to go forward. I'm always interested in updates on wood fiber. I still don't think it's a done deal. Just in the first. But I'm not sure there's any more federal aspects to it. I think it's more business, Swamish nation. I'm open to what you might want to offer on that.
I'm not sure we have any.
No. It's like one step forward, two steps back, it seems to me. I try to follow it quite closely.
It's sort of one step forward and then it's quiet.
Yeah.
And then there's another step forward and then it's quiet. So, meeting with the community, but.
Okay. Other than that, our priorities are going to continue to be housing. So the housing, national housing strategy is now in place. The agreement with British Columbia is in place. Money will start to flow and that's really important to us. In 2019, we're expecting to bring into play what we are calling like a housing allowance. So it's kind of like the Canada Child Benefit. In that for certain income levels, there will be an amount of money you get each month to close that gap between rent, that you have a thousand dollars a month, but you don't have thirteen hundred dollars a month. So this is actually quite revolutionary public policy, but we've heard over and over. Canadians, it's, it's actually quite interesting. We have the second highest growth of the G7 countries in 2018. In 2017, we were first. Lowest unemployment in 44 years. The Canadian businesses, small and businesses and large businesses have created about 800,000 jobs. They're the lowest debt to GDP ratio in the G7. And yet Canadians are saying they have a sense of anxiety about their personal finances. And I know that Minister Murnual has anxiety about our debt, but just personal debt that people hold. So we've tried to drill down into, into what is causing that or what are the aspects of that. So number one is the cost of the mortgage or rent. Number two is the class of technology. It's really interesting. Very, very expensive. And we know Canada has among some of the highest rates. And I think that, again, a place like this can be such a strong voice for how that cost is now impeding creativity, entrepreneurship, independence, education, everything. And then people are concerned about things like the cost of insurance. So I think these are things that Canadians typically could manage before, for some reason. It just seems that people feel very stressed, even though the traditional fundamentals of a strong economy are all there. So just that might factor a little bit into your strategic thinking. People may not be particularly forthcoming about that, but that's how they feel.
Given that, you know, the cost of housing in Vancouver, Toronto is, you know, monumentally higher than, say, Saskatoon or Jangnam. How does, how does that new policy apply? Does it apply in just high-cost markets or will it apply everywhere?
It seems to apply everywhere. Yeah. I mean, it's, I guess it's all maybe relative a little, a little bit, you know? So that's sort of like an, like a undercurrent. Other than that, I don't, like, I can't tell you about what the platform will be. But it'll still continue to be focused on the middle class. And the, the big middle that I think we're all particularly focused on. The housing strategy does focus more on lower, like the hardest, the hardest, most challenging people to house. And that's based on extensive consultation with Canadians who feel that that should be an important priority, which is pretty heartening as Canadians. The Canada Child Benefit has been incredibly successful and popular. And I think here in Swamish, there's an awful lot of families that are benefiting. That's the kind of thing people stop me on the street about, to say what a difference it's made.
Council, I know you might have questions for Kate, but maybe while Pamela's here.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, honestly, I can, I can go now. I don't want to take up your whole meeting. I just wanted to have an introduction.
Let's keep you on topic a little longer.
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks, Pam, for coming. Couple of things. And the estuary project is kind of a neat project, absolutely. But there is a phase two to that. So I'm sure there will be assistance that will be required. And that is the one, as the mayor said, could be a real model. Because that involves the port, enhancing the port and also enhancing the estuary itself and the natural functions of the estuary. So it really is an interesting balance that has to be maintained there. And the other thing that, that I get involved is just generally our waterfront. And for mainly jurisdictional reasons, the federal government has to play a key role in that. Because, as you know, and so it's as mundane as things like dredging the blind channel so you can navigate through it too. As the mayor said, some of the mitigation and adaptation to sea low rise and climate change. And, and for example, if you've seen the blind channel recently, you know of all the diking that's going in, in front of the developments. The next piece going south is in front of a municipal park. So that will come from our resources, not a developer paying for it. But we have to maintain that. And so there's opportunities there, absolutely, for the federal government to assist us. There's no question. The housing one is interesting because I happened to be listening to CBC this morning and they were talking about it. And the role of the federal government so far, which seems to be successful, is in the financing for developers to finance rental. And what hasn't apparently happened is financing sub-market rental. Not through the federal government, at least. And the particular developer representative was on the radio this morning, was talking about the province really not getting too far into that. We've had a couple of projects locally with B C Housing, which so far are going quite well. But that's, that's very targeted housing. And so generally speaking, to try to keep the cost down, you're talking about some kind of sub-market. And that talks about some kind of a subsidy, some kind of operating or capital subsidy.
So that's really important because when we put the strategy together, we, we're wanting to try new things. But we know that we don't exactly know. And it would take the developer and it would take the community. And so Adam Vaughan, who's the parliamentary secretary and a former Toronto city councillor, so he's super great to work with because he comes from this local perspective, has asked that we bring forward even the early thinking from, say, Swamish, so that we can have finance working on it and housing working. And we can, we can actually write proposals that the federal government would be willing to participate in. But might not be, we, we just don't think we can say, here's the criteria, now fill out the form. We just, we just know that the markets are different and the needs are different. So please feel free, if you've got something that looks like it could work, to take, to ask me so that we can take advantage of the expertise that is really wanting to make this work in Ottawa. I just got off the phone from some developers in British Columbia also talking about a platform promise we made about waiving GST, which would help a lot with costs in order to provide market rental housing, but reduce the, the cost of it. And it's, it, it's impossible to add up all the things you pay GST on, on a big, huge building. But the policy is that there's a way afterward to recoup that. So there's things that aren't really very well understood. So I would be happy to know the things that you need to know more about. So I can get answers to those, so that proposals make sense here. And on the Swamish project, we did, I, we worked really hard with Kim Stigman before the, before Western Steep during bought Swamish terminals. And the proposal didn't succeed because the Minister of Transport, Garnaut, was only looking at like quite large ports. So we should take another run at this, maybe from the point of view of, at the municipal level, mitigating sea level rise, that, that kind of thing. Because the dyke, the dredging of the dyke is still, I gather, it's still something that's a priority.
Dredging of the blind channel?
Yeah, yeah, not the dyke, the blind channel, yeah.
It'll have to happen.
Yeah. So if that's a priority of yours, whenever you have a proposal, just let us know. And we will make sure the proposal responds to the, the funding criteria.
I have also Pen Downe and Councilor Anderson.
So two things. One, just a comment on, on the wood fiber. I know they do have, they're working through CSA for approval around floating storage regulations. There are still some concerns around turnpoles, shipping regulations. So there is stuff definitely under federal jurisdiction that some people have questions and concerns about. So I think there is still a federal role to play there. The, the, my second piece is in terms of, in particular, I'm thinking of the tech supercluster, but also housing and transportation. And maybe there's not a general best way. But, or maybe there is, but in these sorts of things, is it best for a private business to go to the federal government? The municipality under the tech supercluster thing, do you approach the federal government? Is it better for us to go with the province? Or like, is there any sort of best way that?
Well, any kind of investment in tech usually comes through Mr. Bain's. And so for instance, Carbon Engineering has got on a couple of streams, massive proposals in front of the federal government right now. The support of the community always helps. But the, the, those, if you're talking about a private entity, they deal directly with the, with the federal government. But it's always smart to build, to build support. So I'm not sure if you're, if you're, if you take that approach with firms you're trying to help gain federal funding. If that's what you're trying to do.
So would you have it about some municipality could join, an economic development body could join a supercluster? In fact, they are part of superclusters already. In the Opa-Do-Gen, they've joined the technology supercluster. Versus, so that's something that the municipality could do, which actually just shows strength around the actual development of that.
That's right.
Sector alongside private, private industries. So there's no, it doesn't have to be one or the other. In terms of federal, federal funding, accessing provincial federal funding, you know, municipally will work to try to connect individual businesses with funding opportunities. Many of them are quite sophisticated, like Carbon Engineering. They're far beyond, they're not coming to us to access, you know, shred funding or N S R or anything like that. They're, they're far beyond and also large-scale investment. But supporting them, I think, is the key message that we need to set as a municipality, that we support the development of this sector within our municipality and the growth of this sector. So I think our job is to facilitate and connect when they don't have connections themselves and to show support.
Councilor Anderson?
Yes, last week, we met with MLA Jordan Sturdy and discussed regional transit. About a year ago, Jordan brought to perhaps council, certainly the local chamber, to attention the federal government's offer for a corridor rail study that would focus on both freight and passenger transport. Jordan raised it in the House last year and the response from the minister was that the province had other priorities on the South Island. So that the offer wasn't taken. Clearly, the North Shore is in trouble with its crossings and we're part of that picture. Perhaps rail and another rail crossing for transit could be part of the solutions. So my question is, do you know about the status of that federal government offer for a regional corridor rail study? And is there anything we might do with the North Shore municipalities to foster more work on that?
Well, it's a key priority for sure for Minister Garnaut. We on the North Shore are very much focused on a particular rail bridge and limitations between them. I guess we're going to be in North Ban. In terms of the corridor as a whole, it's, that's, it's interesting. This is what we started talking, talking about in the first place. It's tough if the province doesn't want to make it a priority. This is where we find that we get stuck every now and then. But I think the B C Transit piece has got everything lined up. So I think that's like playing to our strengths right off the bat. From a rail corridor study perspective, I would say that's perhaps longer term. And I'm always supportive of getting started because you just, it helps you to be ready when things might maybe do align. So I don't know from your council's perspective, what priority you put on the B C Transit opportunity? And the rail opportunity, if they're similar, can you see them phased in? Like what the timeline would be for either of those? But whatever you like is what I will endeavor to support.
We haven't taken a position on the rail corridor as a council. We certainly haven't engaged our community in that discussion because we all know that rail needs more people and more density and big towers to support it. So I'm not sure that that is the vision of the community. So that would have to go out to, to some sort of community discussion. But certainly, the B C Transit piece is an immediate need. And we are working very hard to try and make that happen this year, but next year.
Good.
So we're working on that last night.
Maybe you could give me a, like, just send Rab an update on that so that I can stay abreast of every step of the way.
I saw a couple of hands here. Councilor Stone or Councilor French, just you and me?
Yes, maybe a little bit, but question out of left field. But are there any whispers or discussions at the federal level around guaranteed minimum income and any approaches?
Yeah. Minister Dupont is, well, he's a, he's an academic and an economist and absolutely a big fan of that idea. So our government hasn't pursued that yet. We pursue things around that that will help people. But I've heard, when you said whisper, I've heard that he's quite interested. It may be something that ends up in a campaign platform, I don't know. But I'll find out more about where he's coming from on that.
Yeah. We know B C was going to do a pilot, wasn't it? I think someone else was, maybe Ontario, but that's.
Ontario, that changed one year into the pilot.
Ontario, no education, no kindergarten, no nothing in Ontario.
Privatized medical care.
All right. So why don't we take a five-minute recess? And then Kate will come back to finishing the sector strategy, next day 101. And Council, if you want to have a chat with Pam.
Sure.
Casually, we'll just take a stretch break for five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks. You're welcome. Good to see you. You're welcome.
Welcome back, the committee as a whole. We are just finishing off our sector analysis. So Council, any last questions on the sector analysis for Kate? And then we'll move on to Economic Development 101. Okay, I'm not hearing any more questions. We can move on.
So now I just need to build a plan around that, right?
Yeah, just build a plan.
We'll have that, we'll have that next week.
Okay, well, that is a good question, Kate. What is your mind?
So 2019 will be when we undertake the comprehensive plan development. That's when we have federal funding. The actual project has to be completed within the window of 2019.
the window of 2019. Um, and, but that doesn't mean that we're going to not implement, um, action items, as I mentioned during the presentation. So, we're already heading in the direction, um, but we're going to focus our approach even more once that comprehensive plan is, is complete and then endorsed by council. Is that, all right.
Thank you.
Just allow me to get the next presentation. Just needed. Okay, so this is, um, just an overview of, of what we do as a department and how we align with, uh, council and OCP objectives. So, in 2017, um, when I joined the district, uh, there was an economic development review, uh, research and review that had been completed. That review had, um, recommended a new, uh, or revitalization of the economic development department and, um, as part of that, uh, undertaken action plan development, um, to support economic development efforts in Squamish. Through that, that process, one of the things that, um, was lacking was a clear mandate in terms of what is, what does our department actually do? Um, so, working with staff and endorsed by council, uh, we developed a mandate for economic development. And really, the goal of economic development as it was defined within the mandate is to support, uh, the vibrancy of the existing business community while strategically positioning Squamish for future economic growth. And specifically, um, the, the role or the work that we did, um, or do on an ongoing basis is to promote Squamish as a place of business and, um, to support a collaborative late relationship between private and public sectors and share information, data, resources and tools. That boils down to, um, two terms that get often used in, um, in economic development practice, which is, uh, business retention and expansion of our local, our local businesses and investment attraction. So, seeking new investment, whether that's for direct investment, um, or new businesses to locate here in Squamish. One of the things, um, through the development of the plan was an understanding that, um, the majority of business growth comes from existing businesses already here and established within the community and that new business typically accounts for somewhere in the range of 20% of, of growth within a community. So, making sure that we were striking an appropriate balance of working with local firms, um, versus, um, looking for and seeking new investment in new firms. The action plan was premised on three pillars. The three pillars, um, were, uh, defined as people, business, place. And the pillars were, um, were put in place so that we ensure sustainable economic development and that we're considering also not only the economy, but the social and environmental impacts of the growth, um, that we experience. So, the three goals were to ensure that more people were trained and locally employed and that there's diverse, um, and sustainable business growth and that infrastructure, business infrastructure specifically, meets the needs of employees and employers. Uh, and this was built off of council's previous, um, strategic, the previous council's strategic plan. The action plan identified several priorities, but it also identified how we would work. So, what are our four overarching actions? And they really focused on partnerships, so developing partnerships locally, also regionally, provincially and nationally, um, prioritizing our work, prioritizing the sectors, prioritizing how we serve those sectors, um, and doing that through a data-based approach in terms of, um, understanding, uh, which sectors, uh, provide potential. Communicating and advocating, um, so making sure that, um, we are providing information to council, to the province nationally on, um, areas that affect our business climate and our ability to grow. And then facilitating, so that's really around connecting our businesses with opportunities to scale, grow, whether that be through funding, um, introducing them to the network of other economic development organizations or, um, providing them with opportunities, um, associated with education, R and D and innovation. So, we've completed several of the items, um, that were identified priorities. Um, we also have several that we really see as just, it's just phase one of, of those priorities. The one thing that I really feel economics done, economic development has done in the past year and a half is sort of set, lay a foundation. And the foundation was, we had pretty much zero awareness, um, as a business and retention organ, organization and that we were, um, I think, uh, generally, the, the community didn't know what we did. In fact, they were really clear on what our mandate was, what our role was, what type of information we provided. Um, and from there, what we've created is a, um, an environment where we're outwardly communicating the work that we're doing, we're trying to integrate, um, with other organizations in terms of delivering, uh, business retention and expansion. Um, and then we're also outwardly communicating beyond our region to try to attract new investment. So, what we've done, um, in the business retention and expansion space is we've definitely refreshed our communication, uh, communications and outreach. We have a new, uh, economic development web portal that I'm sure most of you have seen or are familiar with. Um, and that portal, um, was developed so that we could provide or bring Squamish tools, resources and data under one, um, one hat essentially, so that we could better connect, um, those tools to our local business community. Uh, what's really unique about, um, the work that we did is we also did that in partnership with the Squamish Chamber, so that Squamish Chamber for the tools that we, we created would have access to those as well. So, they're not just sitting on economic development's website, they're also sitting on the chamber's, uh, website, um, and we've kind of created an ecosystem so businesses can access those tools on an ongoing basis. And those tools, we've created custom ones. We have seven new custom tools, um, that focus on everything from business climate to, um, looking at competitor profiles, um, and also workforce. We, um, have created new guides and reports. Uh, the guides that come to mind is the how-to guide, um, which is really for local businesses that are in, uh, more of a startup phase or maybe moving from a home-based operation to bricks and mortar. Um, we've also created, uh, the hiring and, um, uh, retention guide, which gives an overview of, uh, workforce trends and, um, and considerations for local businesses to take advantage of for their hiring, um, retention and attraction strategies. Uh, we've, uh, embarked on business events in collaboration with the chamber, Tourism Squamish, most recently hosting higher, uh, Ignite Your Hiring, which was at Quest University, uh, in the latter part of 2018. That, um, was an outcome of the Business Retention Guide. Um, and, uh, we had over 70 in attendance and we had partners, um, from local, regional, provincial and federal, um, jurisdictions and they provided information, programs, tools and resources to our local business community to help them with their business retention and attraction. Strategic partnerships, definitely, um, the chamber and Tourism, Tourism Squamish come to mind. Uh, we're working on lots of different, um, uh, projects together, uh, whether that be events or whether that be open data projects or Squamish Excellence, which is, uh, really a keystone project of the BC Rule Dividend that is helping build, uh, retention and attraction, um, in Squamish. And, um, investment opportunities, um, we've hosted FAMs and we've tried to connect our business community to those FAMs. Um, and we're going to continue to be strategic in terms of, uh, how we're going to connect our local community, business community with these opportunities.
Sorry, what's a FAM?
Oh, sorry, familiarization tours. So, essentially, um, investors, um, or could be any, it could be any site selectors, um, could come to Squamish and we would provide a familiarization tour of Squamish and why they should consider Squamish as a place to do business, um, either in terms of trade or investment or establishing their own business. And then business development, again, we've refreshed our communications. We now have a live, um, section on our website that provides overviews of living in Squamish and resources and tools. We have a work and a hire talent section on our, uh, web portal, portal, doing the same thing, providing resources and information, um, and a whole invest section that's now on our, our web portal. Um, we have a Y Squamish, which is an investment guide, um, that gives the five reasons to do business in Squamish, um, which we append with specific information when we're doing lead management. So, working with a particular, um, investor in a particular field will append data and information and considerations onto that investment guide, but the investment guide is accessible to anybody. Uh, we do hosting and networking, um, we're working on a, um, new, uh, BC PMP regional pilot. The PMP is a provincial nominee program, um, and what it, um, what the program involves is, uh, bringing new immigrants into the community who are going to start businesses and there's criteria in order to, um, be considered for the program. So, we're working with the province right now at creating a process to participate within that program, um, which will be launching in March of this year. Um, we have lots of custom analysis that we do for, um, in strategic investment, um, and strategic partnerships, so working with, um, regional, provincial partners to try to drive investment and interest into Squamish. Wanted to talk a little bit about our key account strategy, um, and lead management. So, lead management is a fairly extensive aspect of the work that we do in economic development, um, and it, and it can take a considerable amount of time. Typically, we've been focused on inbound leads, so leads that are reaching out to us that have interest in Squamish. And to be honest, we are inundated with, uh, interest in Squamish. In order to make sure that our work is strategic and focused, we are, um, or we have developed a key account strategy, which we are, um, further refining with the sector work that we're doing. And so, that key account assessment really looks at a number of different criteria to determine how we're going to serve the customer. So, for instance, um, we look at, are they a targeted industry? What kind of average wages does that industry, um, produce? What stage are they at in terms of their business planning? Are they actually a local business already here? And then, does a policy, um, uh, environment align with what they're proposing? And then we have an assessment outcome, which then directs how we work with these leads. So, for instance, um, a non-targeted lead, um, they maybe are in the early stages of their business planning, they maybe don't have a completed business plan. We're instead of going to work on a business plan with them, going to direct them to the resources that are best going to suit their needs. So, for instance, Community Futures would be an excellent referral that we would make and suggest that they go and speak with Community Futures to help them do their business planning and perhaps access funding. Um, when it's a targeted lead, um, we really focus on nurturing that lead. So, we'll work with them at various stages of their business process to ensure that we remove barriers of entry into Squamish. Or we also remove barriers for scaling their business that's already here in Squamish. So, that's how we service those leads, whether that's facilitating connections at a provincial or national level, connecting them with other, um, organizations here regionally, um, or walking them through the process in terms of ensuring that they understand zoning, um, and bylaws and regulatory environment and permitting requirements. Um, we really work with them along the way to make sure that they're, they're successful.
Could you explain what district service support or provide resources might entail? And what I'm thinking of is, is we're limited to the support that we can give to a business as a local government.
Absolutely. So, when we talk about district service support, we talked about actually more around explaining the process. So, what is the permitting process, business licensing process, does your zoning conform? Um, those are the types of services we would provide. Um, we're not giving them advice of whether their business is going to succeed or not. We're not, um, promoting their business in, in a sort of marketing way. What we're doing is simply connecting them with the services that are available at a regional, provincial or national level and sometimes those services are from us, from the municipality itself.
And the provide resources.
So, resources are not, are not funding, resources are tools and information and data. Yeah.
Could you do a countermeasure?
Just following up with the council race, and I understand there's sort of been an ongoing debate about whether you have an arms-length versus in-house economic development and whether we're assisting business or not. When you start talking about key accounts, to me, that implies more support, more staff time, fostering and nurturing a specific business to come here and, and so I'm wondering, does that cross the line for an in-house economic development team?
That's, that's the traditional work of an economic development team at a municipal level. Where the assisting to government, uh, sorry, assisting business comes in from the community charter is more along, um, if we were, uh, brokering deals, that would be an example. Um, you know, brokering individual relationships, perhaps real estate relationships, um, providing competitive advantage information that's going to support their growth rather than another complete.
Tax rate for a specific company over another.
Exactly, yeah. It's providing a specific advantage to a specific business over and above the other, um, general information and support that you provide.
But, but sort of a, a higher concentration of staff time and resources doesn't count as, as special assistance?
No, not, not as far as I know. So, also, um, one of the things that we have done as part of our economic development action plan is create the SESG, which is a Squamish Economic Steering Group. The steering group's made up of organizations, um, that focus on economic development, might not be their entire mandate, but definitely, um, they support. Uh, in addition, we have working groups that are really specific task force that help address particular, um, barriers or opportunities associated with economic development. We've got the Future Forward Group that's focused on sector development. We've got the Workforce Group that's looking at the workforce, uh, climate and ways to improve our workforce, um, and so on. And then we've also got several partners that we're working with at a strategic level on, um, on various, um, projects. So, I mentioned some of them in the previous presentation, such as the Industry Innovation Project, uh, we had Smart Cities, um, which Carrie had mentioned, last year, uh, where we worked with, I think it was 13 in the end, 13 partners, um, of, of, from all academia backgrounds, industry backgrounds and government. Um, and the partners really, um, they're the ecosystem I can remember. Um, we're about one piece in the puzzle, um, in terms of, uh, our opportunity as, as Squamish and in terms of our growth. Uh, it takes industry, it takes organizations like the chamber, it takes Community Futures and it takes regional, provincial and federal partners to pull it off. And so, really, um, it's determining in this ecosystem who plays what role, I think, is critical moving forward and I think we're getting there, we're not quite there yet and there's room for improvement. I'm not going to dive into this, but what I've done is instead of boring you with, um, slide after slide of our performance, I created a one-slide handout of just a snapshot of our performance and then I thought you could ask questions as opposed to, uh, me presenting to you. So, I thought I would just, um, leave that with you. We've had, um, really good success in terms of numbers, um, in terms of our economic development website. We've done very limited paid promotion around that, um, really only to promote, um, events that are taking place within our community for local business, but we've seen a significant uptake in, um, in visits to our site. Um, you'll notice that site time is a bit down, but I think that's simply because, um, people are finding what they need, they're accessing resources and leaving the site. Um, we, we noticed that on some of the sub-pages of our site, some of the, the, um, average time was over five minutes. So, we think we're doing quite well and we have relevant, um, information on the site. Um, we're generating, we're working very closely with our communications team in the district to generate, um, social media, um, engagement, um, and as well, um, drive media coverage so that, um, the topics surrounding economic development, the opportunity and even the barriers, um, are discussed at the community level and also. are discussed at the community level and also beyond the community level. And then, we've had pretty good attendance with our first foray into events last year. Really, the Chamber does the bulk of the events, and that's probably the way that it should be. We've decided to take some key events that where we thought we had the ability to provide value and run with those, and we're evaluating how we can go forward with our events in 2019 and beyond. And we're driving revenue, so we, partnership revenue. So, from the federal government and from the provincial government, we've received a pretty decent amount of funding for economic development purposes last year. And moving into this year, we did apply for one grant, and we're successful. So, we've been receiving a good amount of funding. I was just going to do a bit of a situational analysis, which actually I was hoping to do before the sector presentation, because I think it helps set the context. But, we'll do it backwards, and I think that's fine. I think these are not going to come up as any surprise to you. I think you're all well aware of what's happening in our local community as it pertains to workforce and population growth. But, I want to assure you that they are being considered in the work that we're doing and how we approach things like our sector planning and our other work, such as the employment space model. So, our growing workforce, these are very basic estimates, because we haven't taken age into account. But, our growing workforce based on the SLRD and Growth Management Plan would put our workforce at 20,000 by 2036. That would mean that we need to create additional 400 jobs per year. And if we were just to maintain the share of people that are currently working here today in our district, that would mean 200 jobs. So, that would be a significant increase in our workforce, our local workforce in available employment. And if we were just to maintain the share of commuters that we have today, that would result in a 50% increase. So, we would have more than 4,000 commuters by 2036. So, that growth has gone into our approach in terms of actually our sector plan from an employment standpoint and firm growth. But, it's also gone into how are we, how are we ensuring that we're reflecting the policy recommendations and our business structure, infrastructure recommendations moving forward? Also, something interesting is that because we're evolving to a knowledge-based economy, we're also evolving as a workforce to a much more knowledge-based workforce. In fact, now, almost 70% of our workforce, 25 to 64, they hold a post-secondary diploma or degree. That's up 11% over 2006, so that's, that's a pretty steep increase. And what's really interesting is the composition of our workforce. The major, major field of study is engineering, business and/or health. And yet, only 16% are working in related fields locally here today. So, that's, that's very telling in terms of an opportunity to realign our job offerings here in Swamish and also help reduce commuting, the impacts from commuting as well, and also increase the social well-being of the residents. So, this is actually a profile of the talent leakage that we're experiencing. And it's not unique to just one or two sectors. It's actually happening across all sectors of our economy. So, the, the 480 that you see there, that's the number of workforce in Accommodation and Food Services that are working outside of Swamish. And that accounts for 36% of the total employment in that field. Just that's how you read that graph. So, it's quite, it's quite telling that we see that there's lots of opportunity for bringing our talent back. And we have to figure out as a community how to do that. That includes, you know, growing the number of firms and growing employment. But, it also includes looking at opportunities and strategies that relate to hiring retention practices. So, the Ignite Your Hiring event that we hosted in December and the report that we produced in partnership with the Tourism Swamish and Chamber was really trying to highlight those opportunities. How can we give the tools to our local community to attract and retain staff? And we have heard of some success from some of the local employers in the region that have used those tools to do exactly that. For instance, I was told that West Coast Down Bullies was having a real staffing challenge in terms of recruiting new staff. And from the owner, they said that they employed some of the tactics and used the research to position their industry. And within that same week, they launched a campaign and they subsequently hired seven additional staff. Today, they're up to a workforce of 50 and growing. So, they're going to need to ensure that they have access to talent, and we know that there's talent leakage. So, we need to give those tools at a business retention and expansion level to these businesses so they can actually succeed. And another interesting factoid from them was that 12% of their staff is made up of First Nations, Swamish nations. So, and they're working strategically with Swamish nations to drive performance. So, that's really positive. Wages. So, the average annual wage, and this is from MZ Analyst, so it's the most up-to-date data I have, is 40, roughly $46,000 annually. And the average hourly wage is sitting under $24. But, of the top three occupations, they account for 37% of all employed. The average annual wages are actually $31,000, and the hourly average wage is $1733. While, you know, this is Vancouver's living wage, it's been calculated by Van City, I would estimate that we're not far off. And it's $20.91. So, a significant proportion of those employed are making less than what I would consider a living wage. This does not account, though, just when you look at this, for full-time, part-time status. This has taken over sort of a full-time lens, and it doesn't account for age and living status. So, you know, some of these occupations is made up of students that are living at home. But, we know that's not everybody that's working in these occupations. And then, land. So, we had conducted analysis last year for planning or with planning as part of their downtown rezoning considerations. And what we did was, we looked at what the estimated shortfall would be or whether there would be a shortfall in commercial space. And we developed our own forecasting model. It's not a perfect science, but we based it on forecasting models that were developed for Suri and that incorporated consideration for population growth, floor space densities by average worker, and a number of different variables. So, this was in absence of an employment space model. And we estimated that there is a commercial space shortage of nearly 60,000 square meters of floor space. So, by 2036. So, that's a considerable amount of shortage. But, we are embarking on this employment land space model to be able to better understand needs, in particular as it pertains to industrial land development and space needs. We also want, through this modeling process, to understand how growth in, in different areas within Swamish is going to affect and impact on space and land considerations as well. And I think that also plays into, you know, from an environmental perspective, as we develop or grow from an employment space perspective, are we considering all the objectives that Council's striving for? So, you know, connected neighborhoods and neighborhood nodes and the ability to improve our carbon footprint. So, that's all considered there. But, definitely, the 2015 recommendations, they still prove true today. We definitely need to make sure that we have our inventory sorted. That's going to help our investment, it's also going to help our local business community. We need to continue to expand employment lands if we are going to meet some of the objectives that we're striving for around some of these firms. So, in particular, we're going to need to make decisions around the Cheekai and the land use within the Cheekai as pertains to mitigation, hazard mitigation, as it was pointed out in the study. And we're going to have to ensure that we're considering our land use management as we move forward in step with where we want to go in terms of our sector development. And then, workforce housing definitely is impacting on talent attraction and retention. So, you know, near-zero vacancy rate, rental rate has been at play for a while. But, most recently, the Chamber undertook a survey with its membership. We have one in the field right now that assessed the challenge that businesses are having in attracting retaining staff, as well as the need for workforce housing. The study concluded that three in four are facing, businesses are facing challenges today. And they've estimated through this survey that there's a need for 500-plus housing, I don't know, units, but employees in need of housing.
Just got a question.
Of course.
Why do you say workforce housing units? What is your definition of that, or what is kind of the general lingo around? I mean, I think of Whistler's, like, staff accommodations, but is that what we're talking about?
So, workforce housing has a broad definition. I think some people hear workforce housing and think what camps or, because this is actually secure housing for serving resident workforce and resident businesses. That's the objective. And there's a lot of varying needs within the community to sector to sector. Some of it is very temporary in nature. For instance, our tourism sector has a lot of seasonal employees, and they're really having a challenge in terms of connecting those employees with secure housing while they're here. And the consequence of that is that they are renting out houses and units and trying to manage their workforce housing needs on their own. And then, other, other examples would be soft landing. So, for instance, businesses trying to attract new talent to the community and needing to give them a buffer to be able to find secure housing. It's much easier to find secure housing once they're in the community than it is from outside. So, that's really the definition. And we've, we've actually worked on what a definition could look like. And I believe, because I'm off the top of my head, but up to two years of accommodation or seasonal accommodation managed by the employer. So, the employer and the employee have the contract between each other as opposed to directly with the employee and the landlord. So, that's sort of the definition at this point. And the Chamber has a one-pager, it's quite good, that goes over not only the number of units, forecast unit, but the type of units that are in need. So, that's, it's definitely been very helpful in terms of our analysis and understanding the challenges businesses are facing.
Kate, given we had our presentation on short-term rentals last week, some of the reasons people gave about why they don't want to do long-term rentals is because they wanted the flexibility. Is there an opportunity here to match current Airbnb folks with employers who need seasonal workforce housing? So that maybe only for three months of the year, you're providing temporary housing, and then the rest of the time, the suites are on? Like, is there a synergy there possibly?
I don't see why there wouldn't be. I think the one thing that I want to point out in, when we look at that type of housing is it's not necessarily secure rental stock, because it's really, you know, it's really the determination of the owner, whether they want to rent or not. So, I think what, what's becoming quite apparent is that we need to ensure that there's secure rental stock. But, I don't think it would hurt to try to create programs and incentives for homeowners that are Airbnb to look at that opportunity. I guess the question arises is like, would there be a conflict? Do they see that as too much trouble? So, how do we create an atmosphere where they feel supported? I think there's a good example of, not quite the same, but similar Victory Suites, which was a promotion that was run on the Sunshine Coast around, around actually providing rental stock within your home. So, there was other municipalities out there doing something similar. So, where now? So, that's the end of the situational analysis, but really sets the stage of where we're going. And I have to say that the economic pillar as part of Council's Strategic Plan perfectly aligned to the work that we're doing in terms of indicator development. And also, it perfectly aligns to our pillars of people, business, place. So, I felt like, I felt like everything connected really, really well. And I think using the OCP, which is a basis of a lot of the work that was done for the Action Plan, and then obviously, the basis of Council's Strategic Plan, that's really where everything came together. So, really, this is what's going to set our direction moving forward, Council's Strategic Plan. And really, that, that goal is centered on our mandate of the work that we want to do. And yet, while the economic development goal is central to our work, we think we can affect other areas, in particular environmental and place-making objectives that have been set out by Council. And so, I've just done a little bit of an alignment of your three objectives as stated under the three pillars, and you can see how nicely they come together. So, we're going to work with our partners and their local business community to meet these objectives. And really, we're going to do that through the number of projects we already have ongoing. And then, from our findings of the sector work that we're going to undertake in 2019, we're going to try to become much more focused and refined to be able to drive results in these three areas. This is our, sorry, it's a bit light, but this is our plan for 2019. We've got, we've got them aligned by pillars, so you can see sort of how they line up to our objectives. So, we're starting or completing, definitely starting the Industry Innovation Program. I don't think that's going to complete. We see that as an ongoing program. And we're in the development phase with Quest and SFU and the Chamber, and now SD48. Our Open Data Project, which is really providing a measurement framework for economic development from a health indicator perspective and decision-making perspective. We're going to complete that this year, that was part of our BCPMP dividend funding. And we are going to be bringing an update to Council soon in March of how that project's going and what indicators we are planning to include within that framework. The Sector and FDI Plan, well, I've touched on that quite a bit, and the Employment Space Model. I did touch on the BCPMP Regional Pilot, which is a new program that was announced in the latter part of 2018. And we have been inundated, inundated with requests.
My email, your email.
Yeah, consultants reaching out about potential immigrants that want to participate in the program. So, and it's only a very small percentage that actually succeed. I think it's like 6,500 immigrants join a PMP stream, and the majority of those are for workforce development, and only about 5% are targeted for new business growth. So, our goal with this program, because even before the pilot, we had a lot of PMP outreach, is to really focus in on our strategic objectives around a couple of sub-sectors of our economy and create a process that's as automated as possible so that the capacity of our team is, we're not overwhelmed essentially, as we are right now. so that the capacity of our team is, we're not overwhelmed essentially, as we are right now. So we've been working to build that platform, which we're hoping to launch in March. The Adventure Center project, really that's looking at the revitalization of the Adventure Center, and will be coming to Council, March, correct? March. And then a lot of ongoing work that doesn't go away, such as our lead management, our communications, and events. Moving forward though, it's really key that we get these two items right. All of it's super important. So we're going to be really honing in and focusing on these two items. It doesn't mean that we're going to get rid of anything else or get rid of everything else. It just simply means that we're going to be prioritizing these two projects. In particular, you know, we've got funding this year, and we want to make best use of it. So we may, you know, through our process around lead management, become more streamlined and talk to less people. And we may decide that, you know, particular events are really, can't be our focal point and are better served being offered through other partner organizations so that we can become more targeted and drive results. Because if we spread ourselves too thin, we'll be spinning our wheels and we're not really going to move the needle with those three objectives. And then 2020 and beyond, we'd like to build a new plan. In particular, the original action plan called for a community economic development action plan, which I still think is important. But I think that process needs to be driven by the community. And everybody needs to have their roles, coming to the table with consideration of what their mandate is and what their roles are, and how they can best serve economic development efforts. And then we will, from there, create our own action plan to be able to deliver on what we think is our role within the economic development space. And so we're going to continue to implement our sector plan, really hone in and focus on cluster growth or our targeted theme growth, and continue to monitor and inform. That's really the key areas where we see the opportunity for economic development to really support the community and become very targeted.
And that is it?
Thank you, Kate. How's about you?
So I have a bunch of questions for Doc.
Oh, you can only have one.
So my sense is that in the past, as a municipality, we've been really focused on the expansion retention piece. It sounds like in the presentations we have today, we're thinking a lot more about attraction. We talked about involving The Chamber and with The Chamber's membership and so on. They would seem to fit much more naturally with the retention, expansion piece. So that would lead me to guess that as a community, as we take on more traction, especially that would become our municipal corporation focus? Is that a fair comment or accurate understanding?
I think that the mandate of The Chamber is the mandate of The Chamber. They're going to determine their work plan. We're not directing their work plan in any way. But they're already providing a lot of support in the area of business expansion and retention. And I think that they're a clear partner in that area. Economic development, as it stands today, given the size of economic development and our resources at hand, we really need to decide how we can move the needle with respect to these objectives. And the best way forward to meet these objectives is, in my opinion, and I mean, I don't have, I think everybody agrees in staff level, is to be very focused, very targeted, and work at expanding the opportunity in Squamish. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't work on programs like the Innovation Program, which is very much a business expansion and retention program. But it would be fostering the growth of particular target themes within our economy, the green economy and outdoor recreation themes. So yes, in some ways, we need to focus on reaching outside and reaching beyond and creating those relationships and partnerships and investment. But it serves business protection and expansion efforts at the same time, if that makes sense.
To both ends, continue.
Yeah.
And I don't have a, you know, have an issue with attraction at all. I was just trying to understand. On the attraction piece though, so there's the idea of attracting companies. And, you know, one perspective is that we'll attract companies that will employ people who are already here and currently commuting out. By employing those people, then there's, we're meeting some for other objectives of less commuting. We're not really driving up housing affordability because those people are already here, living here. But there's also been, I think, some mention of attracting a workforce or supporting a new workforce. And then to the degree we're attracting new workers from outside, I do have to wonder about how that fits in with housing affordability and issues around gentrification and so on. And then also, coming into that, to the degree we're thinking about temporary housing for, you know, transient tourism, you know, summer employment workforce and so on, I have to wonder what that might do to our, some of the community connectedness things that we've outlined in our strategic plan. And I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts about how those different pieces do and all fit together?
Okay. So I don't think the goal of economic development would simply be attract companies. That's one aspect of the work that we were doing, but really attract investment opportunities. So how can we help businesses that are here scale and grow, which is business protection and expansion, through investment? So that's one key aspect of the work that we would do. In terms of attracting new workforce, we already are facing talent shortages in certain areas. So our existing businesses cannot grow if we don't have the right workforce in place. And so it would be hard to limit the growth to only creating jobs for those that are commuting. That is a key goal, but we also have to look at what the needs are of our local firms so that they actually can grow. So making sure that we have the engineers that are here, we obviously do. We have a lot of engineers, but, you know, the design firms have the access to talent that they need. So importing talent actually also breeds innovation and collaboration. So I think there would be a little bit of both. And then in terms of placemaking, and you're talking about workforce, secure workforce housing, that can manifest in many different ways. It doesn't only have to manifest in, you know, one development in one area. But we do need to creatively think of how we can create secure opportunities for housing. So employers also have that as a carrot that they can dangle to attract workforce to work with. Housing becomes a key issue. We've got people living in vans that are working at various businesses, and it affects the outcome for these businesses in terms of, if they're not, if they're not, employees don't have secure housing every day, then they're most likely to displace and go elsewhere to find that secure housing, which leaves the employers very vulnerable if they're taking on large-scale contracts to be able to sustain them. So it's a key, key issue. So we need to come up with what are the right solutions, but within the context of the objectives that Council has around placemaking, the environment, and the economy. It can't work on their own. It has to work all together.
A month of time, Tessa Peggill? Is it?
Well, I'll just dig into one little piece of that if I can.
Can you keep your answer brief, please, Kate?
Yeah.
And just turn around ahead. So if we are really successful on this economic development approach, you know, we might see a bunch of highly-paid engineers and so on migrating to Squamish. And I do have to wonder about what that does to the housing affordability picture here and how we balance that.
So we already have a number of highly-paid engineers living in Squamish.
They're not working here, though.
They're not necessarily working here.
And that's our, you know, is our target to deploy people that are already here versus attracting new engineers and new.
Absolutely. That's what I heard Kate say.
Yes.
But we also might need more.
We may need more, and once you create those value chains, there's so much spinoff. I think that there's a lot of opportunity for all different types of occupations to benefit from it. But from a housing perspective, I mean, that's a national problem that's out there. We need to solve that, not at a, just a Squamish level. We need to solve that at a national level. So I think that it's hard to predict what's going to happen. I mean, there's so many factors of influence around housing costs from, you know, obviously, the demand side to policy and regulatory. So all we can do is work the best we can within the framework of what we know today and try to predict the future. With those moths.
Yeah.
Those accurate moths. Simple.
We will have to learn from municipalities across the country, in large and small. Everyone's dealing with this issue. Counselor Reese?
Yeah, briefly, you seem to be in suspense between is economic development in-house or out of house in some kind of another structure? Do we have any kind of a timeline for resolving that?
I haven't received any direction from Council to present whether we should be arms-length or in-house. So really, I mean, we've done some preliminary investigation into both models and the pros and cons, and there's pros and cons of both models. We're forging ahead as we are a municipal department, like just considering that we're a municipal department moving forward and working within that context. But if we hear from Council that there's a desire to provide a perspective or a recommendation around that, then we'll come back to Council with that recommendation, if that's the desire.
Well, because I just have to briefly make a comment, but maybe it is a discussion we should have with the pros and cons. So everybody's kind of just being on the same page with that. And where we go after that, I don't want to predict, but it's worthwhile for discussion.
Yeah, I think for me, it's the timing of that discussion. We're going to look back on what Ms. Mulligan's department is trying to achieve this year. Do we wait till our sector strategy is done and dusted? And we've got, the Adventure Center project has been delivered? So.
Yeah, I'm not in a hurry for that.
It's a capacity. It's one of capacity. So I will, I'm happy to bring that back, but I think it's latter 2019.
We are full tilt. So something would have to be reprioritized in order to take that work on, absolutely. And we're also in the process of hiring right now. So we're a department of one in a temporary, so.
Let's bring that back a little bit later in the year.
Sure.
I'm happy to have that conversation, but I also don't want to distract the important objectives going on. Can I wrap it up? I'm not seeing any more hands. No. Counselor Peggill, if I thought your question was going to be brief, I might want to put it on the floor. Is it brief?
Well, I can ask Kate after, too.
You can stick around.
You're cutting into her, let's check.
I'll ask a question, then we can either directly whether, okay. So even when I look at some of the average income levels and so on, and think about, again, housing piece and all these things, I understand it's a bigger problem. But what are, you know, are our thoughts or goals or targets around getting those people that are under the livable wage income into a new profession in Squamish at some of these new wonderful companies that are going to be here? What's our sort of capacity or goal in terms of doing that so they don't have to leave Squamish as the well-paid engineers come in?
So we're actually already working in that space. So we have an extensive partnership with Work BC. So Back in Motion has the contract with Work BC. Work BC sits on our SCSG, as well as we've been undertaking collaborative hiring fairs. In fact, we have one tonight. Everybody should just come out and say hi. Public.
Where is that one?
It's at the library. They're all at the library from six till eight PM. And this one is dealing with public and social services. So what we've been doing is targeted hiring fairs, and we've had really good response. The last one was professional, scientific, and technical, and there was a lot of people through the door. And then what we're also doing is, you know, Work BC, we're referring people to Work BC that are looking for work, so through our website, when we have people contact us. And Work BC typically will work with all different workforce demographics and help support them in terms of job-seeking locally. So they're the great resource for that. We wouldn't necessarily be focused on, you know, placing workforce in a particular business. That's, that wouldn't, but we work with our partners to facilitate that. That's kind of how we've been working with economic development.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was very informative, very helpful. We will recess till 12:30.
And the kindergartners will be here until 3:00.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to Committee on the Whole. First up, we have a delegation from the Constellation Festival. I will let, I'll turn it over to you, Terry. You can introduce the team.
I get it now.
As you seem, you know, keen to do that. We've got 15 minutes on the agenda for this. So I know there's a bit of a presentation, and Council will allow a few minutes for questions.
Well, thanks so much for taking the time to see us. I know that we did have an opportunity to present to the last council and mayor, and some of you were here for that. But welcome and congratulations to new councilors and mayor. It's really nice to see you guys. We are really thrilled about the progress that we've been able to make since our last presentation. Voila, our logo, Squamish Constellation Festival. And we have made great strides in moving ahead toward July 26th to 28th festival weekend. That's us. I prematurely introduced me, Tamara Stanners. This is Catherine Matthews, Kurt Larson, and Kirsten Andrews. The four of us are directors who are making magic happen daily. As most of you know, it is going to take place in Henderson Field, which is the original footprint of the original Squamish Valley Music Festival. It's beautiful. And we're going 4 to 11, both Friday and Saturday, 2 to 11 on Sunday. No, sorry, 4 to 11 Friday, 2 to 11 Saturday and Sunday. As you can see, we're starting out small in the first year with our cap of 7,500 people with the hopes of growing it to year four to 15,000 to 17,000, depending on how comfortable it feels for everybody at that point. So we have 40-plus bands, lots of visual artists already coming together, VIP area. You know, it's like any other festival. It's just going to be beautiful, except for even better because we're really taking our time to try and make it as local and magical as we humanly can, which is super fun. Children 12 and under are free. We want to make it really family-friendly. A really strong representation of female artists this year, and Indigenous, and LGBTQ. Because there are some really cool artists that they just are. And we're so excited about being able to represent them. You know, it's, as you can see, like the marketplace, it's going to be vendors, mostly local. Site-wide liquor license, we're really excited about. We're really going to feature our local craft breweries and cideries and our distillery, which is so fun to be able to shine a light on everybody like that, that works so hard in the community. And then the satellite events. They are going to.
You skipped over the weed garden.
I didn't, I didn't mean to. I actually honestly didn't mean to. The weed garden is something else. It's just brand new. It's, we are honestly being treated as the guinea pigs for the cannabis industry in what we can do and what we can't do. But because it is legal now, we do want to provide a legal, safe space away from the families and kids for people who want to smoke marijuana to do so. And we don't even know how that's going to come together yet because we're still working with the governing bodies to figure that out. But it will be safe and it will be good. And we don't know what it looks like yet. And then the satellite events are going to be held at different venues throughout the community because one of the big complaints was that the rest of Squamish did not benefit so much from the Squamish Valley Music Festival, and we want to change that. We want to make sure that everybody can, you know, resolve, what am I trying to say?
Succeed.
So we're programming different venues like the cideries and the breweries and the Naughty Borough with some extraordinary talent for that weekend to keep it going afterwards. We have 75% of our musical artists booked, and it's looking really good. And I wish we could tell you who they are, but we can't because we're sworn to secrecy until March 5th. But it is looking really good, and by the end of the week, yes, we'll be probably 100%. March 5th, we announce the lineup. And then we also announce then our pre-sale for locals of $99, which is. of $99, which is very inexpensive. But it is a limited number, and it was really just because we won't be able to allow a lot of free tickets to the entire neighborhood surrounding Brennan Park, the area has grown so much residentially. This is a way for us to give back to the community. And this was excellent news that we received on January 26th, that we got a grant from Creative BC through their Amplify BC Music Fund of $125,000. It was a huge pat on the back, really, for the work that we'd already done for them to have the belief in us that they do, that we are actually a really viable festival, because they would never have given us that kind of funding had they not believed in what we were doing. So, we're thrilled about that. And as a result of it, just had a ton of press. And in fact, it ultimately became the launch of the festival, which we weren't really planning until March 5th, but it was really exciting, because we never, ever could have paid for the kind of publicity we ended up getting with the news that came out. So, we appeared in every publication on both CBC, CKNW, and the different television stations. People are really excited about it. They're thrilled. The overall consensus was that Squamish was missed, the festival that was here was really missed by the entire lower mainland. Most of those people didn't realize that this one's going to be 7,500 people, and they probably won't all be able to get in, because we're going to sell out on the first day, but that's our dream. We also are really super excited about our branding and our new website. We got Cedar Sky Signs and Alex Folks to do the branding with us. Kirsten Andrews worked really closely with him. We wanted to keep it local, and Cedar Sky Signs was so thrilled that they could be a part of what is going to become our image and really what is going to sell us through, not just this year, but in years to come. We have a nighttime version and a daytime version that we'll be using of our logo, too. And you can see, it's really cool. See, there's the badge, but then we also break it down to just the three-tier logo, so it can fit on all kinds of different representations. We're really excited about that. And I'm handing it over to Kat, and she talks about the rest of the exciting stuff.
Hi. So, I'm just going to go through the site plan really quickly and draw your eye to a couple of things that we're excited about. Different from Squamish Valley, we'll have two stages on Hendrickson Field, so you can see the really large main stage up here in this right corner, but then we'll also have a smaller stage up towards the left side that includes a bunch of kind of more local artists, downtown artists. And then throughout the day, we'll switch back and forth from stage to stage, so that way there's music all day, there's never any interruption as we do any changeovers. We also have this set of vendors right here, which, as Tamara talked about, will be a bunch of local people. We're talking to one of the organizers of Refresh, so she's really familiar with programming within the district. And then another thing is, we will have a sponsor bar. We have a beer and a cider sponsor already signed, which is also very exciting for us. But then in addition to that, we're doing a locals bar that will include Back Country, A-Frame, all of the local producers, so that we're not just having the people that are paying for the marketing presence, but we also have our local industry involved as well. We are, we are inclusive. One of the things that the district has helped with us so far was sending out a letter to the neighborhoods around Brennan Park, and on that, we were able to put a phone number, so now anyone can call us with any questions or inquiries. It's a very open line, so that we can talk to people. Also, something that we're really committed to, and then moving away more from the community in that way, is how we affect the community and how we give back. So, we're talking about creating a, I think right now it's about an eight-by-20-foot piece of art, that will be a legacy piece, that we're trying to find a place for, like a home for it within Squamish, so giving back to the community in that way. And then, like we were saying with Alex, Cedar Sky Signs, we're going as, like as locally as we can hiring, moving forward with that. One of our other big mandates is zero waste, so we had a really good waste management meeting yesterday with AWAR, which is the Association of Whistler Area Residents for the Environment, that are helping us with zero-waste stations that will be located all the way across the site. We're talking about reusable eco cups and a lot of other ways to reduce our waste and our footprint. So, as Tamara was saying, we have had a huge, kind of like a soft launch that we didn't really expect, and we've already had 215 people sign up on the website, which is really exciting for us, having done no marketing so far. And 59% of those people have said that they're interested in volunteering, which is amazing, because that's another thing that we're really excited about with the community, is involving people through a robust volunteering program. And then we have an info deck for you that has a bunch more information on it, if you would ever like to go find it on this akilavens.ca info deck. And that is our presentation. Take questions.
Council, any questions?
Sorry. Thank you guys for coming, first of all. Around the piece of the neighborhood, you mentioned, I know that the Squamish Festival did tickets for the neighborhood, and I didn't quite catch what you said, or can you go into what your, what that sort of festival neighborhood direct interfaces plan is?
Yeah. Well, we, unlike the Brand Live people, we are not going to be giving every single person in the area free tickets. We wish we could, we really, really do, but it just isn't something that we can do from a financial standpoint at this time. That's why we came up with that $99 ticket price. And aside from that, we just want to really engage the community, and we're doing that with the help of Devin and Christina, to make sure that we are hearing their concerns, because we understand that not everybody is going to be thrilled by the, you know, crowds that will come in and the noise that will be made. But we really want to mitigate that by communicating really clearly that, you know, we are here and we want to help, not to become thorns in anybody's side. We want to make sure that everything is cleaned up around the area, like not allow for the broken glass and the porta-potties that aren't really porta-potties on the sides of the roads. You know, try and keep people away from parking in places that they're not supposed to, keep people away from camping in places that they're not supposed to, and try just to make sure that we are as comfortable a festival as we can possibly be within the community, you know, so without disrupting it. I wish we could give everybody free tickets.
No, that wasn't...
No, I really do.
And the last note on that is that we end every night at 11:00 PM, and so, as opposed to like the later 1:30.
Is that what it was?
I think it was 1:30 for Squamish Valley, so we don't anticipate as much interference as far as noise pollution towards the end of the night.
Councilor Reese?
Thank you. And five to 7,000 people per day, I take it?
Yes.
And where, how are they going to be managed? How will they get there? Where are the parking lots and so forth? Is there extra transit or?
Yes.
Speak to that?
Yes, yes, to all of the, yes, yes, and yes to that. We have been working on shuttles from both Whistler and Vancouver, so there will be those sorts of things that will mitigate some of the parking. And we're working also with Devin to secure some parking space, which is great. Kurt has been very actively talking to the transit people here in Squamish to increase their transit around that weekend. We'll also have shuttles going back and forth between the camping that we are, we don't have camping, that's one of the things we don't have, but we are going to provide shuttles to different camping areas. So, that's going to be one of the big ways we do it. I think Kat has been, being in the operations, she's way better at this than I am.
Yeah, so the All Weather Fields is going to be one of our main parking sites, and then we're also talking to the concrete, like on Centennial, the concrete producer, and we would have shuttles from there, and then we're also Cardinal Concrete. And then we're also talking about how shuttles around town, and then we haven't sent a plan yet, but we'll be sending a plan to the transit company to see if we can have them bump up just regular buses, but we have to submit a plan for that and of course pay for the difference of service.
We'll also have a bike rally, you know, like the other festivals have to try and encourage as many people as possible locally to take their bikes.
Councilor Stoner?
Nick, Councilor Pendleton?
Thanks for coming in and presenting. Quick question on the 5,000 to 7,000, does that include children despite the fact that the tickets?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so it's five to 7,000 tickets?
Right.
Plus, okay. And just a thanks for the efforts in terms of trying to disperse into some of the other community venues. I've been to a number of festivals where that has, that approach has been taken, and I think it works out really well, and it helps dissipate folks at the end of the night as well, to other locations. I'm excited to hear that you guys are taking that approach.
Thank you.
Councilor Pendleton?
Yeah, and related to some Councilor Stoner's comments, how are you envisioning the interaction with other local venues? And you touched a bit on increasing shuttle service, but are you thinking you'll be booking the talent at these places on their behalf? And if the stages are active on your site the whole time, what might draw me to a local venue to see something else?
Excellent questions. We've actually hired an amazing producer of events, Anna. She's, she lives in Squamish now, too, which is awesome, and she's working on that with us, as we work with the different venues and also program them for what would be best for them and also for the festival. And we're coming, you know, it's a, it's not easy to come up with the right way to handle that, but we are going to start the music before our programming starts, so that there is reason for locals who may not be going to the festival to go to any one of the venues and see some really, really awesome talent, and then for the people leaving the festival to go and join in afterwards. And because it's our first year, it's really a work in progress, but we're taking it really seriously, because we feel like it's one of the, one of the things that's going to set us aside as a festival, you know, really making Squamish shine, you know, brighter than just Hendrickson Field. So, yeah, it's fun and challenging, and Anna's on it. But thank you for that question.
Similar to that, if a local venue is booking an act that is also playing at the Constellation Festival, how does, like if they do that the weekend before, a few weekends before, is that okay, not okay? Like, how do our local businesses then work around you?
Well, we're working with them as much as possible. I know even with Wind Festival, just because they are the week before us now, working on all the different artists is something we really want to help them with, whether it's sharing artists or, you know, coming up with the, coming up with a way to make the artists within the venue, if they are, say, on the same as what the festival is going to have, buffing up either or, like making them different in some way, whether that's adding, you know, or changing it to a stripped-down acoustic performance in the venue, or adding a DJ with the artist in the venue, but making it different in some ways, so that the programming isn't exactly the same, but still working together to make sure that everybody will benefit from it. It, you know, we're, I love the inclusion part of it and keeping it as a real community festival that we all get to win, and that's really important, and I know that we can do it. There are still so many great bands, too, that I think that we have a lot that we won't overlap at all, and if we do, we'll work together to make sure that it's something special for each of us.
Yeah, because I think that, that sort of community benefit piece is the strong vision that resonates sort of within council and in the community, and we'll be fortunate to sort of have people coming back going, oh, that didn't really look up.
Yeah, that would be terrible, and it certainly wouldn't be something that we'd want at all. It's really important for us just because we, you know, we live here and we go to the establishments, and we know the people, and we really care about them, that they succeed and we succeed, and that people have a great time.
And we're, we're working to try to get all of the satellite's events sponsored, so that takes a big part of the financial risk off of everybody. If we can have them sponsored, that covers like the artist cost, right? So, then they're not using bar revenue to try to offset an artist cost, because that would already be covered, and that's something that we're working towards.
I know I wasn't here the last time around, but this council had some concerns about you working with the Arts Council, and they have moved their Wind Festival to the weekend before, but I understand that you are working together well and...
Yes. Yeah, we have conversations weekly about everything from the artists to sharing tents, and I think it's the kind of relationship that we can really build well, especially getting into their granting cycle and what that means with them, you know, working with a for-profit organization. It just puts us into some different territory, but I, the people are great, you know, who are on the Arts Council, and I think that we all want the same thing, which is to create something really vibrant for the community with both music and art. And also, Locker Sports is awesome. They're amazing to work with, so fun.
They're coming right up after you in terms of the weekend.
Yeah.
So, obviously, your cleanup is important.
Yeah, we're going to be all out of their way, but they've been super cooperative, too, in letting us use the parking lot, which is like awesome. It's such an excellent space, so, yeah.
Councilor Pendleton?
Sorry, did you want to?
I was just going to say, a final, a note that wasn't included or that I didn't talk about is that our operations plan, it will be revised and back to the district by March 15th, that we've been working really closely with Devin, and she's been helping connect us with all of the people that are going to need to approve that and revise it with us. So, come March 15th, like I didn't go super into operations, because we'll have really detailed plans at that point.
That we're going back to, council?
This probably may have just covered that off there as far as more operational piece, but you mentioned there wasn't camping on site. We know that just a normal weekend in July, there's issues with, I imagine that'd be a big part of the operational plan that you're, can we bring it forward?
A big part of it is, we're talking with Greg at Cheek Eye Ranch, so, which I'm not sure how he normally operates in summers, but depending on what his new zone is, we anticipate that we can probably house up to around 1,000 people there, which would be a good place to put a bunch of people for camping.
Yeah, Councilor Stoner?
And how many discounted tickets are there, so at the hundred-dollar?
The 99 discounted one, a thousand, right?
It's a thousand, yes.
A thousand, yeah.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks for having us.
You're being swarm.
I love it. I hope they're all at the festival.
Bring it in.
Thanks so much for having us.
Thank you for coming. All right, council, so we have some special guests in the audience. So, who's the teachers? Pardon? Are you the teacher?
Yes, I am.
What's your name?
Linda Peterson.
Okay, so Linda Peterson's kindergarten class is here from?
Balanceup Elementary, grade one-two.
Grade one, oh, it's grade one-two?
Yes. I wonder about how the town works and all that sort of stuff.
Okay. So, this afternoon, we're in what's called a Committee of the Whole, so this is a more, I don't know, these meetings are a little more fun, because we have to sit at this big table all together. Usually, we sit around this big horseshoe here for our nighttime meetings, and at Committee of the Whole, we talk about things that council members might have lots of questions about. So, you know, when your teacher teaches you something new, and if you've got questions, you put your hand up and ask? That's what council has to do, too. They have to put their hand up in order to ask a question. And then I get to say whether they talk or not, as the mayor, that's part of my job. So, what I'm wondering is if your class might have any questions about how government works, and then the students could come to the table and maybe ask council some questions.
We did not know we'd be able to. That's awesome.
And we've got a few minutes for that, so if anybody has questions, but they haven't come to the table, because we use microphones.
Right, and why don't, since you're in charge of the meeting, why don't, if you have a question about the government, the town government, right, not the provincial, not the community government, put your hand up, and our mayor will pick you or not, right? Yeah? I'd like to ask some questions. Julius, you said you wanted to ask some questions. Do you have a question? You have to come to the table.
Pardon? Good. You can think about it.
They, they, we talk about all the things that towns decide, right? They decide about so many things.
Oh, I see a hand over there. Do you want to come up to the table and have a seat and just tell us your first name, and then you can ask your question?
Prepare for surprise.
All right. And what's your name?
Mason.
Mason, hi, welcome to council chambers. What's your question?
I know that you guys decided that... I know that you guys made some of the laws.
That's true. We do, we do get to decide some of the laws. So we decide what kind of buildings can be built where.
Like you probably decided that you, that someone would build a substance on my mom's work.
Yes, sometimes houses go in front of people's work.
And a torch flew off and hit somebody.
Yeah, that happened in the Windstorm, didn't it?
And a torch cut a power line, that's how we got our power out.
Yep, that happens. And you know what? The province is following up on that. People are very happy about that.
I wasn't even allowed to open my fridge. And my, and besides, my fridge is broken at home.
Okay.
Thank you, Mason.
Thank you, Mason. Okay, see some more hands. Okay, so Julius, Julius, do you want to come up to the table? And then the man in the gray coat, you can come up to the table and you can be next.
Parker, that's you.
Parker, you can come and sit here next to councillor Fennigill and you can ask your question here after Julius. Hi.
Hi.
What's your question?
What are some of the new decisions we're gonna make?
Some of the new decisions we're gonna make? One of the councillors want to take that? Don't be shy, councillor.
Well, I'll take, I'll take, I'll take it.
Councillor.
This one, I'm just looking, this is our agenda and we go through what we're gonna do in a day. And our next thing after we answer some questions from you guys is talking about the zoning bylaw update. And our last, our last speaker in your class that asked questions said that a house went in front near his mom's work and...
That was me.
That was you. And we'll be, we'll be talking about where good places for houses are, where good places to work should be. And we can, and that's the next stuff that we're gonna be talking about.
Hey.
That's open for a iPod.
Who's in charge of plowing the roads?
Who's in charge of plowing the roads? Well? That's Gary Buxton, he's one of our general managers. And he oversees the people that help plow our roads. Do you have a question about how they get plowed or when they get plowed?
No.
We have lots of trucks with plows on us. So when it does snow, we're ready. And we plow the busiest streets first and the ones with the fastest travel. They're the first streets that we plow so that people can get a ride.
And the sidewalks to schools now. You know, excuse me, it's hard to be in school.
The other bus is still a lot before there's a school.
That's right. And the other thing that council's working on right now is our budget. And so every year we decide how to spend the taxes that your parents pay.
What are budgets?
Budget, it's what we spend money on every year. So we're in charge of roads, parks, Brennan Park. And so people right now, there's a box out in the lobby where people can write their comments about what they would like to see in the budget. And so my daughter was at Brennan Park this weekend and she wrote a card that says, "I would like a cafe at Brennan Park." And so you guys can put your comments in the comment box out there. If you think that we should add a better slide to one of the parks or more sidewalks, or maybe you think there's something at Brennan Park that's missing or that could be better, you can put your comments. There's one at Brennan Park and there's one here in the lobby here. So if you had a few minutes, anyone who wanted to write an idea, they can put their idea in our comment box.
Great, we're working on our writing when we're not there.
All right, well, thank you for coming today.
And thanks for having us. We're gonna stay maybe 15 minutes.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then just quietly.
Thanks for asking your question, Parker. So we're gonna move on to our zoning bylaw. But councillor Fennigill?
Well, I'm just curious to see who in the room would be interested in running for council themselves.
Does anybody want to be a politician when they grow up and run the town? Show of hands, anybody?
Anybody want to be a mayor?
Back there, we've got, oh, we've got one.
And over there too?
Oh, we got two.
There's three.
Three.
There's a few.
I think Gary put his hand up.
Four, five. That's awesome though.
We lost them. Matt, the part I handed over to you. Council, we actually had a request for a letter of support from the Stormwater Watershed Society that I meant to have as a late agenda item. They... So I'll read it to you. They're submitting a new application to the Pacific Salmon Foundation as part of their community salmon program to continue the works we are proposing in the Squamish Estuary. So this is phase two with the realignment of the deck and re-watering the bridge. The proposal is pretty much consistent in language to the works we have been discussing and outlines in the 2017 coastal restoration fund application. So replacement of the culvert along the training berm, the realignment of the spit, installation of an intake across the spurline, and then ongoing monitoring. They would like council to provide a letter of support as part of that grant application, which I would write and send. Moved by council rates, seconded by councillors. Any questions about that? I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you for that. We've got a team of planners here. Who's, who am I handing this over to? All right, thank you, Matt. Let's do the zoning bylaw update.
All right, and maybe by the end of this presentation, we'll have some students who want to be bureaucrats when they grow up. Future planners?
Wow!
Yes, just like I did.
Make some, Kelly, make some, Kelly, Matt.
All right, okay, so.
Let's start with Clarkson.
Okay, so greeting council and community. My name is Matt Gunn, I'm a planner here at the District of Squamish.
Yola Squamish is Director of Community Planning, Friday Development Subdivision Coordinator.
Today, we are speaking to council about a proposed update to the District of Squamish zoning bylaw. I did want to start off by thanking councillors who had provided some questions ahead of time. And I have contemplated and come up with some responses to those, but they're not built into the presentation. So it gives me some time at the end of the presentation to speak to those. But we do have some responses to those. So, as I said, we're seeking council direction on a proposed zoning update. The report and presentation is predicated on the department work planning for which a number of years, longer than I did actually, there has been thoughts of updating the zoning bylaw. And at present, and for the last while, it has been considered that it would be an appropriate activity to undergo following adoption of the OCP, which has happened. At the most basic level today, the question is whether council would like staff to direct resources to a significant update to the zoning bylaw. And then there are some iterations within that as to how that might progress. I'm happy to discuss specific issues around zoning bylaw items with council, but it may be more strategic to address those issues after having discussed some critical questions. And that would pertain to the approach that we might use for the zoning bylaw update and the engagement strategy. This is a type of project where there are hundreds of topics that we could delve into. And I'm all ears and would be open to any input that council wanted to provide or opportunities to discuss those. But it would be really great out of this meeting if we could walk away with a sense of what approach we want to take on this project and whether the engagement strategy that we propose is supported by council. So our current, just as good background, our current zoning bylaw was adopted in 2011. This bylaw is the result of a comprehensive two-year review of zoning regulations following the adoption of our previous OCP. In the eight years since that zoning bylaw was adopted, planning staff have noted numerous potential improvements and regulatory issues in the bylaw along with potential solutions for consideration. And we have around 140 of those items identified at this time. And some of them are fairly minor clarifications. Some of them are well-defined, others require more consideration. Some may not even be appropriate in the end. But the way that we've kind of come to this point is every time something comes up that zoning or that planning has identified as a potential issue, we noted. And that's a big list. These types of bylaws are really intricate, they're complicated. We cannot foresee everything as we're developing them. So situations come up all the time that weren't foreseen or expected and we know, okay, there's another problem, we should try and address that. So that's really where we're starting. I have taken that list of all these different items and tried to massage it into something that we could talk about here in council and contemplate in kind of some broad categories. So I've grouped it into these four major topics. And those are aligned zoning, well, we'll get into those in a second. But I did want to point out that this is a structure I tried to create for council. I tried to fit all these kind of issues that we've identified into these topics, but there are outliers, not everything fits quite right. So this is kind of a, this is a constructed format. So if you're looking at something going like that, doesn't really fit this category. Well, that's because these are just a big list of problems that we've identified. Okay, so the first broad topic is aligned zoning with OCP, which was adopted in June of last year. The OCP contains a bunch of policies that either directly or indirectly relate to zoning regulations. And so amendments to the zoning bylaw to implement these OCP policies is really an important aspect of the implementation of the OCP. You always consider this one of the pieces that we need to go through if we want to fully implement our OCP. And some of those topics for implementing the OCP include updating business park zoning... Oh, sorry, yeah, updating business, sorry, go to the first one. Clarify industrial zone uses. That includes addressing some issues to ensure that we have land available for the complete range of industrial activities in our community and that these lands are appropriately zoned and are preserved for their intended use. This ties to a need to update our business park zoning, which faces challenges related to co-location of some incompatible uses. Develop marine zoning is another piece that we want to use to align our zoning with our OCP or implement the zoning. This is a development that's in line with our marine strategy. Facilitating affordable housing forms and tenures. We want to make some amendments that include changes to support acceptance of new housing forms within the community. Implementing severate planning is another piece that we want to address. There are some issues within our zoning bylaw that don't allow us to effectively implement some of the policies within our severate plans. So that's one of the pieces. Aligning zoning with ALC involves development of a agricultural zone. Re-zoning land to match land use designations. We did a bunch of work identifying our long-term vision for use of land in the community. And in some areas, the zoning does not align with that long-term vision. And there are places where we may want to tweak that to coordinate them and ensure that we get the outcome we're looking for. Oh, I thought it was one we can talk.
You're losing the crowd.
I saw them just think lower and lower.
Yeah, totally. Do you think any of them got the dream of becoming a bureaucrat? I'm really concerned they didn't. Okay, and then support environmental sustainability. We've got some minor amendments intended to support environmental sustainability. Topic two, oh, they could have stayed for the image. Yes, this is a topic that is a bit hard to illustrate, increasing flexibility. I did Google flexible bureaucrat and didn't get much, so. I'm stretching up in here with this illustration, but anyway, okay. Yeah, sorry. Okay, but in certain areas, the zoning regulations are a little overly restrictive without providing significant benefit to the community. And so these restrictions, they can frustrate the public, they can impair the maximum potential use of land, or they can create a burden on staff and council through repeated variance applications. So in this area, we're trying, we've got items that we're trying to expand permitted uses and relax regulations where deemed appropriate. And you will see in this presentation, I have increasing flexibility and then closing loopholes. And that's the nature of regulations, we don't get them right. So some of them, we make too constraining, we want to loosen those up in some places. And some of them, they're too loose and things are getting advantage of them, we want to tighten up. So this is the area where we want to loosen up some stuff. Improved functionality is topic three. A lack of clarity in the zoning bylaw can create difficulties for both the public and staff. Confusing and contradictory regulations can lead to challenges in bylaw interpretation, incorrect expectations from landowners, and inconsistency in regulatory application. The proposed amendments involve aligning our regulations with provincial legislation and other municipal bylaws, clarifying regulations and improving usability of the document. And then topic four is addressing gaps in the bylaw. So existing gaps in the bylaw can lead to a wide range of negative community outcomes. Some gaps reflect missing basic zone elements that can lead to incompatible land uses, unreasonable impacts on neighboring properties, or life-safety deficiencies. Loopholes can be taken advantage of at the expense of community or planning intentions. And in some areas, existing land uses are not paired with the relevant zoning, creating non-conforming situations. Something's existing, there's like a single-family house on a privately-owned parcel and it's zoned for park use. And that does, we do have that within our community. Those people come in to do something that doesn't comply with the zoning. So we need to fix some of those types of issues. And then there are parking regulations in a number of situations that are lacking key elements and require some updating. So those are the kind of major topics. I just, and now I want to talk a little bit about a few different approaches that we kind of conceive of that could be used. And, you know, this is, I think, a big piece of this conversation is how does council want to move forward with addressing these if they do want to address these issues. So approach one would be a comprehensive update. This would be intended to address all identified issues through a longer timeframe project over the course of approximately a year or more. It would involve considerable public and stakeholder engagement and it would culminate in repealing the existing zoning bylaw for replacement with a completely revised bylaw. We would try to address all zoning issues through the adoption of that one bylaw. And this has, just as a note, this in our work planning as a department, this has been identified as one of staff's highest priority planning projects for 2019. So this is something that within the planning department, we see as would be very beneficial and would really like to see undertaken. The benefits is that it would identify all the identified issues, including the smaller and the systemic functionality issues. It would be the fastest way to address all these issues as opposed to doing them in smaller batches one at a time. There's economies of scale in the engagement process in doing this in one big process. And also there's economies of scale in the amendment process by doing it through a single bylaw update. However, the major drawback is that high priority issues that council may see within the zoning bylaw, for example, related to the business park or industrial building, something along those lines. If this approach was taken, those would be put in that same timeline and done over the course of the year and a bit. So it wouldn't elevate any projects to move quickly through. Approach number two would be a comprehensive update combined with priority amendments. So the comprehensive update could be phased behind some higher priority items. If council said, hey, this is what we see as the most important issue and we want to deal with now, that could be initiated now. We could start running a comprehensive update, but depending on how many staffing resources we put towards that, that would probably be delayed significantly as priority items were addressed. But if we did do this process, we would eventually combine the priority and the comprehensive update, be able to address all the items. And it would enable council to prioritize specific items to be addressed in the near term. The drawbacks are that the economies of scale would diminish and particularly diminish significantly if there was one priority update that was identified and then like in six months, another priority update was identified. The economy scales would plummet quite quickly, or the economies of scale would plummet quite quickly. And this actually would be the highest commitment of staff resources if the intent was to try and get all of the work, the entire comprehensive update completed. Would be the kind of the most labor-intensive way to do it. And it is also important to note that running simultaneous processes on a zoning bylaw actually can be quite challenging because if you're trying to work on a comprehensive update and the zoning bylaw is being updated separately, the landscape is shifting and so work that's done on the comprehensive update can be negated in utility and need to be redone. And so multiple tracks changing the zoning bylaw can lead to time commitment or time consumption and errors. So there's some challenges with that approach. And then a third approach would be essentially the status quo. If council did not desire to dedicate staff resources to a comprehensive update, then we could continue with what we have been doing, which are periodic amendments based on council priorities on an annual or biannual basis. The benefits here would be that council priorities would be addressed in the short run. The drawbacks is that other kind of systemic issues in the zoning bylaw would not be addressed. We wouldn't get the economies of scale for bylaw updates. And incremental updates can create issues, as I said, through discrepancies and inconsistencies. Yeah.
If I just may add that, I think it's important to note that staff resources would probably be similar in terms of requirements even if we were to take the status quo and just do these one by one. We still need people working on... do these one by one, we still need people working on it. Still has the same engagement requirements and legislative requirement, public hearings. So still, still will take resources.
Okay. And then we did, because the staff recommendation is that we engage in this comprehensive update, we have prepared information around what an engagement strategy for a comprehensive update would be like. So I wanted to present that information, not in the presumption that that is what council is going to direct staff to do, but just for your information. If a comprehensive update was selected, we propose a four-phase engagement strategy. The process would begin with an initiation phase, identifying the major topic areas to be addressed, providing background information, and soliciting public information on these topics. In phase two, which would be the most significant phase, that input would be considered and used to develop the new bylaw regulations. In this phase, targeted stakeholder meetings would be used throughout to inform the development of specific topic area regulatory structure. And then phase three would be used to solicit public feedback on the proposed new regulations. And phase four would be the legislated adoption process. The IAP2 spectrum of public participation, the intent would be to use two different levels on that spectrum. For the involved level would be intended to engage the public, oops, sorry, the consult level would be engage the public on a broad range of topic areas, utilize open houses, backgrounders, white info, and comment portals. So this is kind of the bulk of the kind of lower sensitivity topics that we would have, you know, open house, the house sound room, and that sort of thing to give opportunity for input. But then for topic areas that we deem to be, or that we can consider to be more sensitive and require a higher level of engagement, that we would go to the involved stage and, you know, to get more robust conversation with key stakeholder groups, provide an opportunity for more interaction and more involvement, more input from those groups. And the level that, or for that involved level where we do see there being a, you know, a need for that higher level of engagement, we've got a list of topics here where we have the target stakeholder meetings and more input, and those are on the screen. Agricultural zoning creation, marine zoning creation, updating our missing middle housing regulations or adding to those, updating parking regulations, updating business park zoning and industrial zoning, campground zoning, and university area zoning. There's some, in all those, there are pieces that require clarification or further development, and we're going to need more input, more engagement with the community to do that. And then next steps. From here, to initiate the zoning bylaw, we would, we start off, if we were going on a comprehensive program, by developing materials to support stage one of the engagement program and begin outreach to key stakeholders. Those materials that we'd be developing would be a workshop, some sort of video to kind of explain the project to the community on social media, develop some major issue backgrounders that highlight especially some of those topics we just talked about, and then a web portal for the project with a comment forum. And then we'd begin stakeholder outreach. That would include meetings with key stakeholder groups for specific topics, engaging district staff, and then an open house to introduce the project, outline topic areas that would be addressed, and solicit initial feedback. Staff recommendation is to engage in a comprehensive update. And that is, oh, and then I thought I'd bring us just back to this objective slide to kind of facilitate some conversation with council. Again, you know, the stuff we're looking for at this point is council input on what approach makes the most sense, whether it be comprehensive, comprehensive with priority or periodic priority amendments, feedback on the engagement strategy. And if council is interested in going with priority amendments, what are the amendments that are most desired or most interested in council? And then secondary, there are, as I said, there's 140 items in that list of zoning issues. And so there's time to discuss that, and staff are really happy to engage in that conversation with council, but we thought maybe we should, it'd be valuable for us to get the first items addressed, and then if we have time or as time allows, address those more specific issues. And in particular, in those specific issues, it would be great to get a sense from council what the outcome that's desired may be rather than digging right down to each specific issue. It's most useful if we know what the outcome is that's of interest. And then, and then once we have a sense of that, if we want to dig even further down into the weeds, happy to do that. But we could lose a lot of time in the weeds, so it'd be nice to kind of systematically work through, so we make sure we're well prepared to move forward. That's our presentation.
Let the questions begin. Council, raise.
Thank you. Do you, the staff have your list of priorities? Are there some things you think are sort of more urgent than others in this list? And I say that because, you know, sitting at this table, we don't always see the things that you see and what goes on and the impacts of some of these things. So curious about your perspectives on some of that.
Yeah, that is a good question, and actually, oops, there. That is a good question, and I actually, now that I think about it, I wish I had maybe created a bit of a structure there for how we might move priority items up if that's the case. But yeah, there are a couple that come to mind, and I can go into a few of them right now. Things where changes in land use could prevent opportunities that are especially aligned with the official community plan. I think those are the ones that are probably most concerning. So ones that jump to our mind are, or to my mind, and I'd have to discuss with other staff, but I think the business park is continuing to develop in a way that is going to lead to loss of opportunities for some employment opportunities, some sectors of our community workforce. And so doing some work in the business park is probably a really important one. Another one is where we have land use that currently, or zoning that currently does not match our land use designations. There are some changes, and some of these become quite political, and there are ones that we didn't tackle just following the OCP being adopted. For the councillors that weren't on council in the previous term, just following the OCP being adopted, we, council directed staff to create a zoning bylaw to amend as many items in the zoning bylaw to address OCP policy as possible, but it was done in a fairly compressed timeframe, and so more complex or politically sensitive topics were not addressed. Some of those at this point, I think, would be ones that we consider quite important. And those are politically sensitive because they can involve changing development opportunities or rights, current permitted uses on properties, that if they were to come to pass, could fundamentally diverge from directions we want to go with that are identified in the OCPs, in the land use designations. So that's politically sensitive. We haven't really put out in here, you know, real specific information about what those are, but I could see those being a high priority and something that we'd want to tackle more rapidly. Others that jump out at you, the business park, industrial uses, and because those are kind of tied together, and some of those land uses that are not aligned, or the zoning that's not aligned with the OCP.
I would agree.
Council, back.
So if there's general comfort with moving forward the recommendation you made, is there any reason why you would have to wait to the end, the conclusion to bring back an omnibus with every change or might you identify still under that big project, certain things to bring forward sooner?
Through you, Mayor. Yeah, so that would be the kind of comprehensive update with priority amendments, the level they approach two. And there is nothing to prevent us from doing that. That is a fully reasonable approach for council to direct staff to do. It does just slow down the comprehensive amendment a bit because staff resources will be tied up getting that one piece done, but there's nothing unreasonable about that approach.
Council, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Council, Anderson.
I was a member of the working here for the last comprehensive zoning bylaw review, and my remark, my observation would be that it wasn't very comprehensive. We had no stakeholders invited or any consultant expertise on a large part of our zoning bylaw, and especially industrial. So the industrial zones have not been looked at in a very long time. I would agree with your emphasis on this in the first priority we identified. My question is, is that we have planning processes underway that would affect or would be affected by what we do with the zoning bylaw, and that is namely the marine action strategy. Focus area three and focus area four in that strategy implementation plan, it's short-term items, really would be very closely affected. Hopefully, we would do them together. But my question is, would it not be a challenge? Don't we need to look after the general plan, marine implementation, marine strategy implementation before we could address? And this affects both industrial and marine. You have four topics highlighted under new marine zones. So that's my question. Don't we need to address the planning initiatives underway before we do this? A footnote, some of the action items you have identified here would be affected by neighborhood plans, and for example, the east Loggers Lane, where you have some categories of land that are directly addressed by.
Yep. To you, Mayor. Yeah, so some great points there. So first off with the marine zoning, or that's right, the marine strategy. Absolutely, the, and I've presented it here as part of this project, but in reality, that marine zoning is going to be, I'm going to be working hand in hand with Sarah McJanet, who is working on the marine strategy. And the intention is that the marine strategy implementation work would feed this process. And so that, the changes to marine or the development of marine zoning would likely happen in the development of this plan. That input would happen quite late in the plan because we need time to get there for that strategy to complete. So I think what you're saying, yes, that's an implementation of that piece, and that needs to run its course. And I think given the schedules, we assume that that should be able to feed in at a later point in this process. It wouldn't be happening under my kind of project. Sarah would be running that part of it, and I'd be collaborating with her to get that input. Does that answer that?
In summary, then, you're comfortable with, as per your suggested approach, the comprehensive approach, that you don't need to take out the marine strategy and deal with that later? You're suggesting you can undertake it as per your proposal?
Yeah, essentially, what I've laid out is the same, the process that I'm going to use to do all the other aspects, that would be a similar process that would be used under the marine strategy. And so Sarah will really kind of manage that piece of it. So these both will be happening simultaneously, and Sarah will be kind of managing that marine piece, and then that information will come into the zoning bylaw update to get to its complete form. Thank you. But there was another question. What was this?
East Loggers Lane, you have specific recommendations or items that do address the large part of that area?
Yes. So there, so that's another good question. So what would happen in that situation is that the, one of the big changes in that area that needs to be addressed would probably be undertaken with an approach that preserved maximum opportunities, which would then be further refined and informed by a neighborhood plan. Right now, we have a situation in that area where we could have development occur that constrained and reduced the opportunities, and that is not desirable from a planning perspective. I think we want to delay some of those events until we have time to do things like the neighborhood planning, and we need to come up with a zoning strategy to ensure that that is possible.
Mr. Anderson.
I just wanted to add that it is likely that as we proceed on the zoning bylaw update, you know, there's other moving parts like the marine strategy, and their timing might not come together. So we might, you know, these are, this is what we think it's going to look like, but as we go in the process, it's quite likely that we might break it up, we might leave some things out or not address them fully in the zoning bylaw update. Essentially, we, it's very difficult to align all these together. And in terms of the Loggers East, that is, there are other areas like that that are in a very similar situation as Loggers East, where there's existing zoning that would allow one form of development that we don't necessarily want to see as the only form. And so there, I think there's three areas like that.
Council, I'm sorry.
Thank you. As we were, as I was, yeah, contemplating this, I'm wondering, so with that timeline that you laid out, which is about a year out if we were to go for the, for your, the sort of option one as it was presented, I was curious about, you know, in my short time here with council, we've been dealing with some things that were to be viewed under older regulations, like the last generation OCP. And I'm curious about, in the time between, so say that was the direction that we were to go, we've got a year where would we see a spike in, would you expect to see a spike in applications where, so the applicant could be viewed under the current regulations because they know what those are? And then how are we to operate through that time? And I'm thinking about when the work is done and we've adopted the new bylaw, how long effectively that is out in the future, even with the, before it's fully implemented, given that there'll be sort of a backlog of projects and applicants coming through the old, under the old regulations, and how we sort of mitigate that so we don't have a spike that gets us a spike in stuff that we don't want with the bylaw change.
To you, Mayor. So great question. I think what you've highlighted is just a reality we have to deal with. And that's kind of where option two or approach two would come in. So if we start working on the zoning bylaw, we're going to be doing engagement and consulting and essentially show our cards as to where we want to go with a bunch of these pieces. And there is a time period in which the existing development rates are available and applicants may come in and utilize those. And so there's a delay in when our intention to change the zoning bylaw becomes a reality, and development may occur that's not in line with what we ultimately would like. And so the, the kind of approach that could address that would be the approach two, where we try and move some of those items that we're most concerned about into a priority amendment and try and get that in place so that there isn't a year and a bit before those rules change. But we still will have a period where there is a change. And in some ways, you know, like ultimately, we may have a vision, but there are other things to weigh in, in a sense, like quick changes to zoning can create uncertainty for landowners and could be seen as a real negative from the standpoint of the development community. And so in some ways, even though we have a negative implication where we essentially let people know what we're doing and they have an opportunity to react, maybe that's appropriate because if we are making quick radical changes with little warning, sometimes that may, that could be negative for our perception from outside over time, too. We're weighing kind of pros and cons.
Just to add to that, through you, Mayor, we've seen in the past where zoning changes create quite a bit of risk if the applicants proceed to try and, you know, the landlord wants to fit in an application just before the zoning changes, it creates some uncertainties for them in terms of financing because all of a sudden, the use that they have is legally non-conforming. So if something happens, we cannot use the property in the same way. So I think there is a little bit of, we've seen caution from people in proceeding with applications before the zoning changes. So I think that might mitigate the risk a little bit on our end. But yeah, it's a, if we go with approach two, then we're basically plugging the holes here but leaving those ones open. So we might just have to bite the bullet and try and get this whole thing done in one go. That might be the best strategy.
No follow-up?
Yeah, thank you. And then under approach two, the concept is that we would get to a similar place, it would take, but we spread out over a longer period of time. And I suppose without knowing the, what the priority areas are, although I think you guys have a good idea of what the priority areas are, can you speak to the rough time difference between the start and the end of the, end of the project? Like, are we talking doubling the time to, by going with approach two? Or are we talking tripling the time, or is it a 25% add-on to the time?
I would say not more than double.
No, I think it's somewhere between 30 and 50% more. It's a lot, it will be in procedural steps, so the hearings, the readings, all that has to get separated, the referrals to the ministry and then approvals from the ministry. Engagement-wise, it'll probably be the same amount of resources we'll have to put in because especially these highly affected landowners, you know, you will have to do because especially with these highly affected landowners, you know, you will have to do very targeted engagement separately.
I had a point on that one. Oh, it probably depends on what, how comprehensive a priority update council desires. So, you know, if council was like, you know, these big issues, there are some big issues that are going to be meeting and take a lot of staff time to resolve, like the industrial zoning is not going to be simple. It's going to take a lot of discussion and a lot of contemplation and check-ins. So if we say, hey, let's do that first and put all the resources there, and especially we add in some other ones, like some politically sensitive ones, like aligning zoning with OCP line designation, designation, so those are going to be sensitive, you know, that could become quite a needy project. And so then it, you know, it's going to be a longer, yeah, I don't know about a year, but yeah, it could, some of these, depending on how much goes in there, it could become large. And this whole thing is large, like, you know, this is a guess at what this is going to take, but every one of these issues actually takes a lot of consideration.
You couldn't follow up the OCP with just a simple project?
I guess not. I just said, whatever. Tell me what to do.
Counselor Stone.
So Counselor Anderson has some questions with regards to timing and making sure that we have all the right information in order to inform this. We heard from Kate Mulligan this morning, for example, that she's starting on an employment space modeling project that you guys are involved in. My guess is that there's never an ideal time to do this, and we're not ever going to have all the information. I appreciate the approach of having to wait, waiting until the OCP was done. Is now the right time? Like, there's like these few things that we're waiting for that will hopefully dovetail in, but if they don't, then they're not major issues, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And in fact, you brought, what you brought up, the employment space modeling, and that, like, I look at that, I think, oh my God, that's what I need. For the industry piece, I really like that. But I think there's value in proceeding with what we have and doing key stakeholder consultation and trying to draft what we can based on that because I think the risk of waiting, like, especially in the business park, every month we wait, there's more that's occurring that are limiting and constraining our opportunities. And I think that's an important thing to tackle, given what we know. If we had more information, man, it would be nice, especially if we could say town your size needs this many hectares of this and this many hectares of that, I would love that. But, you know, I'm not sure how long that's going to take or if the output's going to be a hundred percent like, bang, we know what we need. And I think there's stuff that we need to do now that we could do in consultation with stakeholders.
Yep. So that almost sounded to me like you were advocating for approach number two in terms of there's like this key priority right now in the industrial area? Or did I make that up?
Ultimately, like, yeah, I know, I think it's going to, I think it's going to take quite a bit of time to do that anyway, and I think we might as well be running everything over the same period of time. Because I think if we try and do that and say, that's a priority, only do that, all this other stuff's going to wait for a long time. And I kind of think we want to get it all going. It's not going to be as fast as we just do the one, but I think it's more effective in the short run.
Thank you for the clarification.
Or sorry, in the long run, yeah.
The other, by my, as a, to you, Mayor, the other point that I think should be stated, this is the right time because we are going for a lot of growth, so not just in the business park, everywhere. And if we keep waiting, then we're going to lose a lot of opportunities.
Okay. Put myself on the list and then you won't have spoken once, and then I'll go to you, Counselor Perry, and then you, Counselor Anderson. For the benefit of new council members, I know this is a topic that we tried to figure out on the last council, is, is it possible to do a moratorium or stop accepting certain applications in certain areas? Or like, is there any way in which we can constrain, to Counselor Herford's point, influx of the development we don't want while we update?
Not really. Not, not, not from what I understand. The only way we can put a moratorium on things is really for building permit applications and you can only buy 90 days. If there's, if, if council gives direction via the motion for staff to go and prepare this amendment, you have 60 days and then it can be extended to 90 days before the district is obligated to issue a building permit. And the building permit is, from my understanding, in legal terms, is the same applies to the development permit. But that will be, you know, only 90 days. So we've done it in the past where it's a really easy solution, it's a really small area and maybe a smaller issue. And so you can actually prepare a bylaw and adopt it in three months. Other than that, I'm not aware of a tool that we would have that would put a moratorium on development, longer than 90 days.
Thank you for that. My second question is, couldn't we just make a crude zoning change, say in the business park, and just change some of the allowable uses?
We could.
So fraught with hazards, though. It's, yeah, getting it right is gonna, like, we could go.
I don't want to get it right because we're going to do a comprehensive review, but I want to put a pause on some of those uses that are causing us problems. And if I just do a crude change of use, I won't get it right. But it buys us some time to get it right, and we don't get more of a use we don't want in the interim. And so I'm trying to find the balance between your recommendation, which is to do a full comprehensive review, and my worry that I've got a two-year lag on a use that I don't want in the business park anymore. So that's my question, is can we just change the use, not get it right, but get it in play?
Okay. So that is, it is actually a very reasonable approach. The challenge is, okay, so to get a little bit into the business park, the perspective that in the planning department we are concerned with is that there, what, we want to make sure that we have room for industrial activity and we have, our industrial zone has commercial uses within it. And so our business park is commercializing, and we are losing opportunities for light industrial, true light industrial. So we could go in there and pull out what we see as the light industrial uses, oh, sorry, the commercial uses within that light industrial zone. But that is a fairly dramatic move on landowners, and there may be things going on where a landowner has, is trying to get a tenant, is putting something together, and we may have major interference in areas where we don't want to. If we do that, we are, we, I guess the reason we want to be comprehensive and do it carefully is we want to make sure we know where we want to make these moves because they're going to have impact on people's livelihood and investments. And so if we do it broad scale, we're going to have some negative unintended consequences that we don't necessarily want to incur. Now, if politically, like, for example, say there's a place that we're quite comfortable with. I think in the end, the business park is going to have a mix of areas that are commercialized and areas that aren't commercialized. But where those boundaries are, if it's piecemeal, if it's like swaths, that is going to need some engagement and some conversation to find out what's palatable for the landowners, what is going to get us where we want to go. And I worry if we go do it kind of broad scale, we may mess up plans that people are having or working on where we're okay with them doing commercial activities. So there's some risks. Is that, whether or not that is enough of a risk that we shouldn't do it, you know, I'd have to contemplate that. But it's not without risk. I guess that's what I want to point out. Does that make sense?
I get that it has risks.
Okay.
It's definitely possible, as Matt said. However, we've tried this in the past downtown, and we tried to assure the public and the landowners that, hey, we're just putting this stuff until we're, we're going to figure things out. And I believe our experience was that to never do that again. Because the back, we, we had significant backlash from the property owners and from businesses because it'll affect businesses that are maybe in the process of signing a lease. So our recommendation would be to, to not do that. Not without engagement, not without engagement.
I don't want to overuse my time, but to just put a finer point on that, if I go back to that downtown discussion, is that we said we want to temporarily limit height on Cleveland to get this right.
Yeah.
And the community pushed back, we stepped it back, we didn't put that in place, we had a few big developments go, and assessments went up on Cleveland, 68%. Then we had a whole bunch of letters talking about how local businesses can't afford rent on Cleveland Avenue. If we had held tight on our original intent and then played around with the zoning, we would have delayed that, some of that impact, and then lessened, I think, some of that impact. So would we ever do it again? I would do it again, but I would see it all the way through, I think. So I guess what I'm asking you to think about is, are there a couple of particularly challenging uses that are hampering our efforts and will hamper our efforts to manage the industrial need in the business park over time that we might want to just shift out of the zoning bylaw early without doing a comprehensive review? We could put them back in once we figure out what those areas are, but, and that may impact a few people, but we're talking two years. A year to approve this comprehensive zoning bylaw, and then probably another year's worth of lag of people already in process, which means that's a lot of development to keep growing at this pace and a lot of land that disappears in the business park, which is confined space. So this is, I'm behind you on the comprehensive piece. I'm just wondering if there's like a few, yes, some changes that come with risk that we might want to do. Counselor Pat Gil, Counselor Anderson.
So I sort of gather, or I understand that different councils want to plug into the process at different places. And from my own perspective, I see that the OCP as where council, I think, and the public can add the most value and where the OCP is expressing in a prioritized way the experience that the average person on the street should feel or see. And I kind of feel that that's where a lot of our focus and our strategic plan, which ties into that directly, should be. And then from that, staff would have, should have, in theory, the direction to know what is the best engagement approach. And in terms of the engagement on the bylaw, I see that really as a lot more of the how we get to the stuff in the OCP. And so stuff that I would want staff to be taking lead on and deciding on, and to the degree there's public engagement and dissatisfaction with some of the stuff in the zoning bylaw, and that's all called the how, that might be a time when we bring it back up to the OCP and says, is there actually something out of line about where we think we want to get to or not? And as long as we're still okay on the OCP, sort of leave it to staff to, and, you know, as long as we're on target with the OCP, leave it to staff to ultimately determine the how piece. And so that's sort of where my head is at, where I'm a little bit hesitant to weigh in one way or the other on the engagement and to just generally support it. If your assertion is the best way to do what we said we want to do in the OCP is your recommendation, then I'm happy to go with that, but I would like to make sure that we have processes in place to check that we're actually making adequate progress on what's in the OCP. And then just the other piece on both the OCP and zoning bylaw, and we're talking about these big processes in the OCP, I think, which is to do every five years or something like that is the recommendation. But just coming from the software industry, it used to be, do this big project, you do all kinds of analysis and planning and put in like years and then build this wonderful piece of software that was out of date by the time you built it. And it kind of seems that we're in the same sort of thing with OCP and bylaws, and where software has gone in many ways is agile development and a very iterative process, and you're just constantly tweaking and changing. It's just an ongoing thing. And what's in the back of my mind is with the OCP, with the zoning bylaw, some of these things, if we should just more generally be shifting to a process where it's, even if we start with a big chunk like this, our longer-term vision is to just, on an ongoing basis, be adjusting and tweaking rather than sort of plan that every five years we do this massive project.
To you, Mayor. Okay, so on your first point, I think I understand that you're saying, make sure that we're in line with the OCP, but the nuts and bolts of how we do the zoning bylaw thing, you're willing to provide some level of confidence in staff that will, you know, as long as we're in line with the OCP. So appreciate that. And then your second point on, you know, things taking too long and not getting there, it is a good point. And what has been happening on a regular basis has been these, kind of, they've been, it started with an omnibus update, and then it became a, you know, a variance of bus, mini-bus. And so we have been doing these kind of like right-now updates, which generally respond to big issues that we identify or council priorities. And that's been, I think, a really good tool for us to do what you're suggesting, that we need to kind of like respond in the moment when, as much as a bureaucracy can, to the issues that we see. The one downside is that, is that as those happen, they actually can create kind of little problems along the way, and at some point, we need to do a major reboot. And it doesn't address the like lower-level things that cause ongoing aggravation. And so at some point, we need like, you know, Microsoft XP or whatever, I don't know, I keep trying to think software. But we need to like start over again at some point. And, you know, from staff's perspective, there's enough of those like niggling things that we are not, they're not going to be big priority amendments that we have to kind of systemically address. But I think we, the intention is that we always will be presumably doing those kind of like annual or biannual, like, hey, this thing needs to be fixed, let's do that. We're just at the point where there's enough, we kind of also need probably one of these comprehensive.
Counselor Reese and Counselor Stone.
Thank you, yeah. Interesting, three or four things came up when I was listening. So one is, you know, with respect to the downtown and the issue we had with the downtown and the zoning on Cleveland Avenue that we got the pushback on, my understanding from talking to developers was that, because we took away, I think, basically two floors of development on a four-floor building or something significant like that. And that, from my understanding, affected their ability to finance the project. And so that was quite a huge impact. And so I'm not thinking that something like just pulling up one permitted use in the business park, if we identified that, would be quite the same effect. I don't want to repeat the downtown thing again, but I think if we were just a little bit more surgical, we could possibly get away with it without having quite the same impact. The second thing was, and I remember from, and I'm not the expert in this, but I remember from previous experience, the same question came up about how do we stop these applications coming in at the last minute, the Counselor Herford was talking about, and you get the spike of people that are just beating the limit, and then you've got to live with those things for the next few years. And my recollection, at least a couple of cases, was that if we give staff specific direction to change a bylaw, the moment of the resolution is when the line gets drawn, and anybody coming in with an application after that is subject to the new legislation, whatever it is. I'm not the expert on it, but I think that's the position we took a couple of times before. If we gave you a general direction to go ahead and start working on this, that might not come into that category, we might not be able to get away with it then. So as I say, I'm not the expert on that, and you can see other advice on it. But if there was some, one particular use, and we gave you specific instruction to pull that out of the bylaw, that may draw the line, and subsequent applications that came in the next day might be subject to whatever the new, the new bylaw is. So with that in mind, so we can just think about that. The other thing is, I mean, I go back and I can remember the conversation actually sitting around the room when the zoning bylaw came into effect in 2010 or 2011, that this is a living document and really it's quite a dynamic document. And I guess there's just nothing so constant as change itself, and it just seems to be changing, ongoing, and it's just kind of the nature of the beast. And so the idea that we never capture the whole thing in one document, yeah, we would for a snapshot, and very quickly after that, it will be just something, it's a living, breathing thing, and it's going to change all the time. So I'm personally not so concerned about capturing the whole thing in one shot, although I recognize the efficiency in that. I'm more concerned about getting ahead of some of the pressure points that we're seeing. And that's why I asked you about the priorities. And so one of the ones I see is this issue in the business park. The other one is from my viewpoint, and I am a little biased, as you all know now, is with respect to the marine uses and the lands adjoining some of the marine areas. And just because I think that's where there's going to be development pressure, and I would rather be in front of it rather than behind it, so that we absolutely got what we want to get out of those. But I, maybe I misunderstood your comments, Matt, that that's going to happen anyway. Sarah's working on that, is on her own timeline, perhaps? Sarah's working on that, is on her own timeline perhaps? And so maybe that's not a concern for me if that's kind of happening anyway. And so then it goes back, it's the business park, and then you mentioned a whole bunch of other things, aligning of the OCP, which I frankly hadn't thought about, but. So I'm kind of inclined to try to get ahead of this issue in the business park in some fashion. And if we were able to do it with the finished form right off the bat, I doubt we are, I think that would take engagement. But if we see a particular issue, and personally, I'm not sure I have a, whatever the council consensus might be on that, is to go surgically in and stop that use. And that's a process, it's a relatively quick process, and we can get advice on where the line is drawn for previous applications versus subsequent applications and then have a bigger look at it. And so I'm kind of thinking that way. And once again, I recognize the inefficiency in that, but maybe it's what we actually want to get done.
Yeah. To you, Mayor. So, you know, I think your suggestion, I hadn't really thought of this, and partly like when we're drafting these kind of reports and recommendations, we're definitely thinking about palatability, like politically and community-wise. And I think there could be some issues with palatability on that approach, but if council's, you know, behind that, then that's something.
Early in our term.
What's that?
We've got some time to outline.
You guys are down to eliminate it early. Yeah, did you have?
I would agree, sorry to interrupt you, Chair. I'd agree that if there's something very specific that council wants to take on that fixes a very specific problem, council needs to be very disciplined and surgical and targeted, otherwise we very quickly get into option two. I sort of, I don't want to pick on Council Reese, but Council Reese, three or four things came up and he's kind of, oh-oh. We went from a very, somebody could go from a very surgical and tactical response to a very sort of disparate response. And then we're very quickly into option two, and we've abandoned option one. So if there's something that's very sort of short and sharp and surgical that council wants, and no repeat surgeries, that's certainly something that is probably possible, but it, there's a very, we very quickly get over the curve and into option two if we sort of start going, well, that's one item, and there's another one and another one. So as long as council's very disciplined, it's possible, we can get that done, but it's going to be very easy to get into option two.
And following up on that, so not having had that in mind, you know, I haven't thought about what exactly that would look like, but as Gary explained out, if there's willpower and a focus to do that, certainly we can go back and try and come up with like, what are those couple little pieces that would stem some of the bleed of industrial land? And then the other piece I wanted to say was in regards to your comment about the marine zoning. And I will have to admit, marine is something that I am leading to Sarah for, I will engage in her process, but I haven't gotten into it. And so your point about that might be one of the other issues where there's some real potential risks to not acting quickly, it may be totally true, and I'm totally unaware of that because I have not delved in, I've left it to Sarah. But I can certainly engage with Sarah on that. And see, I've essentially said, okay, Sarah, you're going to run this and then I'll help and then we'll bring it in. But I can certainly go and talk to her and say, hey, is there an immediate fix that we need to tackle to make sure we don't lose opportunities? And I can think about that and bring it back if we're going to go with this.
If I can respond. Not in the same sense of perhaps the business park, and I'm not sure what particular issues in the business park might be, and we can maybe have that discussion. Marine strategy is more general, I mean, the land is basically all is owned industrial now. It will probably get applications to rezone, upzone to residential and higher-end stuff. So I don't think we have quite that type of issue. I'm just concerned that we get the uses right before these applications start showing up and we get what we want ahead of what the developer tells us we want. And so I just want to try to get ahead of that. So it's a slightly different issue. It's just a matter of trying to, to me, that's where some development pressure is compared to other parts of the community, and I wanted to try to get ahead of that.
Council Stoner and then Council Anderson.
I'm definitely leaning towards the option of just doing a comprehensive review, I think focusing, if we can, on what we're calling a surgical approach with the industrial part. I know that I've heard time and time again that continues to be the utmost challenges. I think leaving time for the marine action strategy to play a little bit and then having that dovetail in sounds like it's going to work pretty well. One of my questions, but with regards to if we do a comprehensive update, it feels like, I very much appreciate the long laundry list of things that you guys have been kind of flagging along the way of things that don't work, but it almost feels like how it's being presented is kind of like plugging the holes that we've identified along the way as opposed to like an actual comprehensive update of how do we change the zoning bylaw to achieve the form that we're looking to see in 10, 15 years? And so what is the opportunity there to provide some guidance and making sure that if we're going to do a comprehensive update, this is going to look at climate change and green building and affordable housing, connected communities in a way that we've identified in both the OCP and council strategic plan?
I think if I may, I mean, that is, that would be in the category of aligning it with the OCP. So we will be looking for those opportunities of, you know, things like waste management, connectedness. The green building, have we just brought in the step code? And we're moving quite aggressively compared to some of the other communities on the step code. So I would suggest that we see how that plays out and not make it a big focus in the zoning bylaw just because we're not yet sure how the implementation is going to enroll. But I think what you're saying is absolutely would be within the scope of the zoning bylaw update.
And to you, Mayor, further to that, you're right that the list is a laundry list of like little issues. There are a few in there that actually are somewhat bigger, but there aren't, there isn't like one that's like come up with a completely new format. And that, I, early on in this process, when I knew I'd be working on it, I have kind of with staff and like, hey, what do you guys think about some like radical changes? Like there are different forms of zoning. There's form-based code, which is a very different style of zoning. We've talked about it a bit, about whether that's something we'd want to tackle. It would be a major shift and actually like a major process unto itself to like dramatically change the way we do zoning is something that might be worth considering, but it isn't something that we had proposed at this point because of the scope of it and this like big backlog of things that we felt like we wanted to try and fix in our current, you know, keep the car running approach. So it's worth thinking about, and I have put my mind to it a few times and haven't really like had an aha moment that thought I should take that to council, this is the big change. But worthwhile contemplating and we can mull on it some more and see if there are more dramatic changes that would be worth considering. But you're right, this is really a list of like the tune-ups.
Yeah, I would urge staff to give that a little bit more consideration, especially if we're going to go through a full overview update. There's never going to be a perfect time to do it, there will always be a laundry list. So how do we start thinking about that now?
Yeah. And one more response to that is that I think for us, one of the challenges that we've run into when we've talked about it is, would it lead to a better outcome? There's a known, because this, our zoning bylaw is essentially structured like almost every zoning bylaw in the province and probably the country, it's fairly standard to do things this way. There are like little pockets of form-based codes and probably things that are quite different, but most zoning does work, is fairly similarly structured. So it might have a higher risk and unknown outcome. And so that's where often when we start thinking about it, we're kind of like, ah, okay, let's just fix this, that's what we've got. But certainly can put some time into that.
Council Anderson and Council Herford.
I am inclined to support option one as well, hearing your assurance that you can and you will be engaged in this liaison and also the reality that you were going to have to play a year to a certain extent, as I also heard. For me, the new marine zoning needs an overall. We don't have a clear overall picture of the waterfront, and that's one of the issues that we'll need to do alongside. However, I have submitted a question about certain things that are being taken on here. I wonder whether the zoning bylaw is the right place for, or I'll just put this to you. And this is on interface issues. There's a couple of examples, railway proximity guidelines, you want to have a new general regulations section. Interface issues come up in the I-3 zone where you highlighted that. There's a reference here to glare. My question here is, is there not another opportunity to deal with interface issues like this outside of the zoning bylaw in a good neighborhood bylaw or a good neighbor bylaw? So there's another way to do it. Another example of where the zoning bylaw or the question comes up, is it the right place to deal with this? And that is water sale prohibition. I recall about 18 years ago, there was a great big community debate about wood waste and what to do with it. And the solution was proposed to convert it to energy, and there was so much political fuss about it that council of the day decided to revise the zoning bylaw to shut it all down and put in very strict language that the only place that we were going to be able to burn in wood waste was wood fire. Well, it turned out the technology changed, and now we have a school district putting in wood waste boilers. So in other words, a bunch of clutter was added to the zoning bylaw, and from my own experience, nobody remembered why it was there 10 years later. So this is why I wonder, maybe there's some of these things that have other avenues to where they could be addressed. The three examples, railway proximity, interface issues like lighting glare from Squamish terminals, which is here, and water sale prohibition, maybe that belongs somewhere else. I just put that to you.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, to you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Great, great points. For sure, there are, this is, and I hope I made it clear in the report, this is really this like big list of every time it came up, we're like, let's put it in that list. But we really need to consider all of these items to say, are these appropriate? Not everyone here is, yes, we need to do that. There's kind of a range, some are for sure need, fixes that need to be done, some are, we need to contemplate and see if this makes sense. Is this even makes sense to try and do, is this the right place? There's a lot of those kind of questions about, which is why this project is going to be somewhat large, so each one of those needs a bit of contemplation. And so, you know, with some of the things that you pointed out, those are things that we'd want to think about and, you know, it may be that some of those are not appropriate in this place.
So this is a work in progress then, this is in summary?
Okay, excellent. This is not, these are the 140 things we're going to do to the zoning bylaw, these are 140 issues that have come up that we need to try and address. Do we have a solution? Can we come up with a solution? Needs more contemplation.
Council Herford.
I'm supportive of the, of option one, with the motivation being that time is of the essence. So, and there's a lot of change happening under a lot of pressure. I am concerned about that as my first line of questioning about the sort of end run to our new, our new zoning. And I would entertain some more surgical approach, and we could discuss that further just to get, would be one or two, trying to get to the three to five or whatever the threshold is there where we go into option, to option two. And to make sure that we don't lose opportunities that we're looking to create by taking this project on, and I've entertained those, but at this point, I think that option one gets us to where we need to be the most efficient way and in the end the fastest, so I'm happy to support that. But I am concerned about the potential end runs.
Giving a lot of support for outpatient minor operate, minor procedure. Sort of move that up.
Any other questions? Council Reese and Council Anderson.
So, so I guess then, you know, if we kind of lean towards option one, then I guess what I'm looking for is some idea of what people see the problem is with the business park now, and whether you can just let it go through with option one or whether we want to do something in a much more expedited way. And I'm frankly not sure exactly what it is that we're concerned with. I don't know if staff has a concern or somebody else has a concern.
Mr. Anderson?
So there are a number of things that are going on in the business park that are causing us problems. The, probably one of the, okay, from a planning perspective, and I haven't like thought this through, so I might not be as articulate as I would like, but from a planning perspective, we want to make sure that we have land available for the range of business activities. And there are certain business activities that we're really constrained on opportunities for, and those are the light industrial. So, you know, at Pemberton, we've got the auto body shop, the auto body shop may be displaced through development, and, you know, have numerous conversations with them, as I've had with many other similar businesses, there is nowhere for them to go. There are, there are opportunities for businesses in the business park and ongoing creation of those, but because we have a zone there that allows commercialized uses to come in, we create some challenges for some of those dirtier, rougher business activities. And from a planning perspective, we want to make sure we have those places for those businesses. And some of the challenges that we have, when those, okay, so one of the challenges is that when you allow commercialized business, this is at least my understanding, when you allow these commercialized businesses into some of these multi-tenant buildings, the rates go up quite a bit and it becomes challenging from an economic perspective for some of these activities to get places. But on top of that, as you mix businesses in one building, you come into some really challenging building code issues. If you have strictly industrial activities within a building, the requirements for fire separation are very different than if you start commercializing and having a gym or a bunch of people drinking beer and having pizza. And so once that occurs, the requirement for separation puts the costs of renovation way up for these tenants. And then all of a sudden, buildings that might have been available for somebody to go in and do something that's industrial become unavailable because the separation that they're going to need to create to do their business, they essentially get pushed out. And so as we have these I-1s, which have commercial activity within them, get more and more of these, you know, gyms and those types of uses, there becomes less and less opportunity for places, our consumer, our basic I-1, the real I-1, the light industrial activities to find a space that they can afford, whether it's just the economics of, you know, because they've got to compete with places that tend to pay more for rent or because they have to do such intensive changes to the space to allow them to meet the building code, they actually get pushed out. And we're seeing this happening over and over again across the business park to the extent where now, you know, I have concern around where are we going to get our cars fixed and our, and maybe like the ding taken out of, out of the side of my vehicle if I hit something. I think we are at risk of slowly losing all those types of locations. So I think we need to go in and say, there are places where we're going to allow commercialized activity, but there are places where we're not. And those places are going to be kept probably artificially in a particular category of use and price. But I think if we don't do that, we run the risk of having to travel much further for some services or we drive services out of our community because there aren't locations for them that are properly suited. And then there's another complication in that when we create these spaces that are built for, say, a mix of uses, like the intention is, oh yeah, they might be industrial, they might be commercial. When the application is made, often the assumption is that the lowest level of parking requirements are assumed, and that often is more industrial. But when you start having commercial uses show up, the parking requirements are actually much higher. And so we wind up creating the spaces where we don't actually have the requisite parking because the assumption was that they would be in a much lower requirement use. So we're creating these kind of compounding issues for certain sectors of our business plus creating, creating our own hassles with our parking requirements. And so I think we'd like it from a planning perspective, we'd like to segregate out that and create space for all the different components of our business sector. Does that answer your question? I think maybe, you know, this has.
It's not the parking, I mean, we, what we're seeing now is because of the commercial uses that are allowed, people are actually falling through and putting in more parking. So that's, parking is now eating up some of this employment space that could otherwise be floor area. And in, you know, we are tracking the parking requirement, so if somebody came in with a development permit proposal and they've allocated industrial parking, they calculate their parking to industrial use, then at some point they're going to run out of parking and they won't be able to tenant remainder of that building just because there's not enough parking outside. And it's starting to be referred to as a pleasure park. So there's more and more personal services rather than business services.
Which is fine if we have other places to send industry. Which is fine if we have other places to send industry, but we need somewhere to send them. And, and there's a, we have a concern that right now, we don't see where that place is in the long run, which is where that modeling would be really nice. Like I would love to be able to say, hey, this many people in a community this size located this, you know, distance from these kind of major centers. We need this, you know, number hectares. Okay, do we have it? Okay, great. Then we can like be more relaxed. But right now, my sense is that we don't have enough space for, you know, certain light industrial activities. So.
You on the last counsel, Mr. Gunn?
You good?
Well, just follow up. I mean, is that the kind of thing that could be the subject of a quick fix?
I think there's two ways you could do the quick fix. So one is, uh, just take out those uses altogether. Uh, a second approach would be to, uh, continue permitting those uses where they're already occurring. So hence your not impacting the existing businesses. So spot zone essentially those units.
Stripping spot zones.
About Counselor Anderson, Counselor Peddigan, Counselor Stone?
The concept of amending the zoning by law to clarify and differentiate light industrial, medium industrial and heavy industrial uses, we've been talking about that in the community since 2015 with the employment land strategy. But among industry stakeholders, there has been a concern coming up in conversations all the time about tax assessment implications. At the Richmond Conference of the Lower Mainland Local Leadership Academy, I had an opportunity to talk to B C Assessment about this, and they are very happy to help us out, uh, sending a representative up and putting on a workshop on how the zoning by law review might interface with B C Assessment, um, implications, if you like. So, um, uh, this would of course be of interest to our local government as well, uh, these potential impacts. And, and the gentleman reviewed for me some potential scenarios that to watch for. So I just put it to you, perhaps as an idea, if we look at next implementation steps and you've got materials to develop, be developed, including a zoning one-on-one workshop, that consideration might be given to a workshop with B C Assessment specifically on this new concept of, of a, this, uh, industrial zones, uh, situation.
Great idea, Counselor. Counselor Peddigan?
So I have a question and a clarification. Um, the question, if we, you know, went ahead with this comprehensive, um, uh, review and, you know, a year from now, we decide, well, we need to pull all these commercial uses out of the industrial zones. Um, at that point, you know, and the existing use would be grandfathered in, when would that, the new, um, changes take impact? Is it when, you know, a new gym tried to take a lease two years from now? Or, you know, once we've done this, it's forevermore? Like, can you explain a bit more how the grandfathering bit works?
Um, to you, Mayor. Uh, so, so first off, it would depend on what approach we took. Um, it is possible that we would look at everything that was currently existing. And I, I think we need different zones, like we need kind of a industrial business zone that has some more permissive uses. And then we need a true industrial zone, light industrial zone. And it may be that things that are already existing get the, you know, essentially a zone that reflects this big range of stuff that's currently allowed. And that things that haven't gone down that road get, um, zoned in a way that preserves that light industrial intent. Um, so in that case, we wouldn't be creating, um, non-conforming uses. But if we did do something that was broad and say, hey, yeah, there's a gym here right now, but we don't want that in the long run, we're removing that use from your zone. Then that would put it into something that, a status that's protected under the Local Government Act, uh, called non-conforming status. And that status can, they can continue to do that use, um, as long as the use is continuous. So if they, if, if, um, a gym, uh, for example, went out of business, but a new gym opened up, they would get to continue. If, um, ownership changed, they would get to continue. Um, but if they stopped for more than six months, they would not be able to come back and start a gym. And the other situation where non-conforming status is lost is where, um, the building is destroyed to a, I think it's seventy-five percent of the value above the foundation. If that is, um, if seventy-five percent of the value above the foundation is gone, the non-conforming, conforming status is lost.
Now?
Yeah. And then, so my, thank you, my clarification then, um, in terms of recommendations, well, as a general principle, I, you know, staff feels this is the best way to move forward in the context of the O C P and the strategic plan. You know, I'm happy to see staff do that, but I'm a bit hesitant to direct staff and to take ownership of that direction. I, I kind of feel that as a council, I prefer to take ownership of what's outlined in the O C P and our strategic plan and so on, and sort of have it, your responsibility to decide the direction. And that's just sort of, uh, where my head is at right now in the debate I'm having with myself, the recommendation.
Counselor Stone or then Counselor Anderson?
I just want to mention that the employment space modeling we found out this morning is meant to be wrapped up by the end of 2019, so it'll dovetail well into the base.
It would be great.
Thank you. Counselor Herbert?
Well, um, I guess what, I have two, two questions. I'll start with this, this one as we have this, this slide up in the engagement strategy. And, um, it ties in with Counselor Peddigan's point. So how frequently would you see, uh, checking with council as you go through this, this process on your report base here? I'm not advocating for any one model of that. I'm just curious how you see that because it's really.
Yeah. So typically, we would check in at each phase. We'd bring kind of some results of the engagement phase and let council know what occurred in that phase and where we intended to go from there. So that would be the kind of typical piece. Um, one part that I actually, you know, I more recently have been thinking, I, I didn't really address here is, um, if council wanted to have a more hands-on approach or if particular councilors wanted to have a more hands-on approach or involvement in this process, I haven't really built that into the engagement strategy. And so that's something that's an open discussion.
And then, um, the concept that, uh, of the surgical, let's go in and do these things or right now, just to stem the problem, uh, or the perceived problem we have. The, um, that would be, um, essentially overruled by whatever we come up with as we implement the full picture. So we may actually restrict something for the twelve months that we're effectively end up restricting something only for the twelve months while we figure it out. And it may, there's an opportunity that may be relaxed if that's what the finding of the review is, correct? And we're not making like a long, potentially those, those, um, surgical, uh, um, sort of, um, pieces are, could be the end result, but they may not be as well. So it could be for just the period of time and be a bit of a stopgap measure. Is that?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Absolutely. That would be the intention. Because the likelihood that we would get it right is low.
I have enough for you to say.
Expectations low. Expectations low. Do it quickly. Well, okay.
Based on that comment, would I follow up?
I, I would, I would like to think that we would, uh, not get it perfect, but get it better. That's all. Clarify.
Choice of words.
Um, so I don't like doing motions on the fly. I do think staff should come back with a suggestion on that surgical approach on the retail uses in the business park. Uh, I'm, I'm hearing enough support around the table to see at least what that would look like. But I don't think we should have bent it at the table today, uh, in which case I think we would get it wrong. And whether it's spot zoning or eliminating the use, I would want, uh, staff to come back with a recommendation on that. I think council is open to do either, um, and, and keep it, uh, surgical, day, day procedure. I, I generally heard support for option one, which is a more thorough review. Um, I do think council should be involved and engaged in this process throughout. Uh, this is our job, is land use decisions, so, um, let's not surprise council in any turn and take sure that they're updated, uh, throughout. I, I do think that, um, and maybe I'll open this up to council in terms of what they did or didn't see on that list of hundred and forty things. This is our chance to start steering the community towards, um, a forty-five percent reduction in our carbon pollution by 2030 and eliminating altogether by 2050. And so what do we need to put in our zoning by law that helps to create that? Is it the way we, uh, situate buildings to the sun? Is it the way proximity issues to allow people to put up solar panels and other people can't overhang them? Is it, uh, making electric vehicle charging stations at the curb and allow the use? I, I mean, what do we need to do to accelerate the transition in our community? And so to taking Counselor Stone's point, I do think we need to be a little bit visionary here, um, in terms of the public realm and the number of, you know, how we want to use the space and, and how they get used for. There's a nod to green roofs in here, but do we need to push harder on that? Uh, we know that storms will get potentially more intense. So is Permian's coal services, does it become an option or do they become required in the future at some point? And so I think we need to be, you know, the fact that our staff are so integrated now and thinking together, you know, we've got David Ralston working on our asset management plan, which includes natural assets. And so what do we need to be informed in towards only by law that dovetails with that? And we've got Sarah working on marine strategy. And so how does that dovetail? But I, I do think how we move our community in this direction is important to get right in the zoning by law. So it's certainly, you know, if there's categories you've got there, uh, Mr. Gunn, maybe one is about climate change, uh, and changes we need to make to move that forward. I certainly wouldn't be sad to see it have its own category. Uh, and I don't know if there's other things council saw that we're missing in that list or would like to see. Counselor Peddigan?
Well, I'd just like to sort of reinforce the idea of, of being, um, uh, visionary and, and, you know, making a strong statement. We may even want, from my perspective, want to consider, you know, uh, an exclusion of coal mines, for example. Maybe we might never expect to see one in Squamish, but maybe there's some value in making a statement. Um, and I think, you know, uh, so, so, yeah, I would, um, encourage us to be, uh, creative and, and strong, uh, in, in what we do with this. Um, and I, I just want to ask a question, um, you know, I did get an email where someone was referring to the business park as a retail park. So it's gone from industrial park to a business park to a retail park. And I just wonder if, even if, um, as we're contemplating how we want to move forward there, is there any value in council making just some sort of statement or discussion if we even generally see this evolving towards a retail park in a general sense in our minds? Or is there value in, in sort of articulating that somehow, even though it's not a zoning by law? It just, because it seems in some, uh, parts of the community, there's a disconnect with where the, the mind is at here, municipal hall versus what the community is thinking, just in general.
Yeah. To you, Mayor. Uh, so it's funny because you do hear the parks referred to as the industrial park, the business park, like there is, I think there is kind of a, a mix of impressions. And, um, so, uh, we, we did try and tackle a bit of that when we did the O C P. We took the old business park survey plan, we, we repealed it and then, um, tried to kind of reframe the vision. So it might be worth taking a look at how we, we address it in the O C P and see if that rings true. Um, and then maybe what can leapfrog from there might be a good starting point.
Move when staff bring back the surgical approach, maybe we can discuss about that.
Well, I was going to move, um, option one. Staff to direct it to pursue option one.
With and bring back?
I'll do that separately. So, I, yeah, do those two separate motions. And I'll speak to it a second, second.
Everybody want to say that? Counselor Anderson? Thank you. Counselor Reese?
Yeah, and, and I, I tend to agree with the mayor, and actually I was thinking the same thing. We just, I'm not exactly certain exactly how we would deal with the pressing issues in the business park. Uh, but I wasn't going to try to invent it today. And I think that is something I would look for, staff coming back. But I think apart from that, it seems to me that we're proceeding on option one. I think that is the most, uh, realistic and probably the most efficient way of dealing with these things. Um, and probably, uh, the more concise timeline for most of them. So that's, that's why I would move that.
Counselor Anderson?
I just wanted to voice support to Mayor Elliott of your, uh, notion that there should be good hands-on involvement by council. And I'll refer to my experience with the last working group ten years ago. There was a fixed group of stakeholders, unlike the more looser attachment to lists you have here that might be applied for different parts of the project. That fixed working group worked with two consultants, both of whose background was limited to residential and commercial. And what happens is, uh, it, it, it kind of, you get well organized people and articulate people that kind of run the discussion. And our work was heavily focused on the parking regulations. And then it ended up that we were out of sync with council, which was at the same time working on a parking, downtown parking regulations very, very variance. So I think that it would be healthy for council to have strong involvement. We represent the whole community. And, uh, I see that you've already got a rather fluid and comprehensive, if you like, list and approach to identifying stakeholders that need to be brought in. Leave it at that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that?
I've got a motion on the table, so can you wait?
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Stone?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the motion on the table and moving forward with option one, the comprehensive update. Um, I do think it is the most efficient way to get through this laundry list plus some. Um, and I hope it will help direct staff in a, in a more focused way with the future amendment on, or additional piece on a more surgical approach for the industrial park in the short term. Um, one other thing that, um, I'd just like to put out there in addition to adding a lens of climate change and, and green building to this overview is, um, the aspects of public realm and community connectedness. I think that there's some learnings that we need to take out of the mudline zoning and how that worked and didn't work in terms of creating public space and like connected, uh, public spaces that I would like to see brought forward as well.
Counselor French, Counselor Anderson?
Uh, yeah, I'll support the motion. And I heard something that, um, I want to bring a light to. I, I don't think there is any getting it right to a project like this one. And really what we're striving for is general acceptance, and that's all we'll ever get. Because there's always going to be some opposition. And I, I have full faith in staff that what we're going to end up with will be generally accepted with council's oversight.
Thank you. Counselor Harper?
Well, I, as I said earlier, I'm in, in support of this, uh, of, uh, what we're calling option one or the motion. And, um, I agree, it's, it's time to, to do, uh, this project as a whole and try to, uh, eliminate as many of the, the nagging issues and the little holes that, that are created as you, um, adjust, um, or amend, uh, the zoning bylaws sort of piece deals. So it's time to do it and it's the, um, as much as some of the, um, issues are getting pushed out to be addressed, um, when it comes forward in around a year, I still think that's effectively the shortest timeline to get everything done. So I'm happy to support that. And, um, we'll be discussing the more surgical approach for the most clearing issues. So I'm in support. Thank you.
Something, well, I'm just going to clarify the motion. I just, because option one isn't actually in that recommendation. So it's just a matter of getting option one, staff report, or showing this presented in staff report as option one.
Well, it says comprehensive update. That is option one.
Okay, but the comprehensive update is also part of option two. There's some, with some step that's priority. So it's just a matter of.
You did approach one, we say.
To endorse option one, but zoning by law.
Approach, approach one, approach one.
Counselor Peddigan?
Uh, so I, I'm going to vote against this. Um, and as I stated earlier, I, I don't have an issue with this approach in general. I have more of an issue that I think this, this sort of decision, to my mind, should be more in staff's wheelhouse rather than council's. Um, you know, I, I think, um, it's probably part of a, a longer discussion for the future about that, that's our line for me. Um, so, you know, I, I do want to make clear that I'm not against, uh, staff taking this approach. I just don't, I would like this to be a more staff's choice. And so that's why I'm voting against this motion.
Um, I will support this motion. I think that, um, this is the most effective use of our under time. Um, and to make sure that we're not working. we're not working across purposes. That being said, I think there is an opportunity here to consider whether we would zone differently or do zoning differently. And it doesn't have to be the whole community, but maybe there's parts of it where it might make sense to use a different format. I'd like to leave that door open to staff to contemplate that as they learn and engage with the community on this, that just because we've always done it this way, the last of the laws, we have to continue to do this with, if there's a better way to achieve our goal. So that's why I think it's important for council to be walking in step with you as you, as you are engaging the community. I certainly want to close the door to that opportunity if you see a place to put it in. So that being said, I will call the question. All those in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Oh, opposed is councillor Peggon. Motion carries. Thank you.
Second motion.
Second motion.
Okay. And does staff be directed to bring back suggestions dealing with commercial uses in the business park, just leave it general?
That, that detail?
Does that work?
I think it would add on temporary basis or something like that, so that we're not bringing back solutions.
Short term or?
Temporary limits on commercial uses in the business park.
Okay.
Did you catch up yet? Right. Second, second by councillor Stoner. Comment, councillor Rice?
Well, I don't want to repeat myself, but I think staff understand that's the issue and how we might go about it. I'm open to suggestions.
Any other comments? I'll throw one in here. I do think we need to protect the business park for light industrial. I think that we created the mud zones to create an opportunity where retail and light industrial can play together and see how that works. And we've done that downtown, and we've done it at the north end of the business park. But I am concerned that we're going to lose some uses that as a community, we really want to preserve here, and that that land will get too expensive the more that we allow retail there. So I recognize that this is a temporary fix, but I think it's an important one. We have incentivized 100% commercial buildings. We have approved a ton of commercial space downtown. And so this is part of signaling to those landholders that there will be people looking for commercial space in the short term for some of these retail uses. And I think we need to give confidence to the builders down at this end of town that they can, will have tenants, because we're going to temporarily not allow some of these uses in the business park, or perhaps permanently, based on how our zoning conversation goes. I think that's actually important to make that distinction and to, I've talked to a few light industrial startup folks, they're just working by themselves, and right now they're having trouble finding that place from their garage to their first sort of bricks and mortar place. And they're priced out of the place where we would naturally send them to, which is the business park. And so they either have made a giant leap, which they're not ready to do, and because of what's happening there, it is becoming too expensive. And we're going to lose a lot of these young entrepreneurs, because they simply can't afford the space that is being created there. So I'm happy to support this motion. I think I'll look forward to staff suggestion on how we create this surgical changes and advance for longer the zoning update. Councillor Peggon?
I will support this one as well. And I'd just add that I got a tour of the area, I think it was last week, the week before. And my impression was, you know, this is a place where I can see there's places I might want to go, but I would have to drive there, and I wouldn't really feel that comfortable walking around. And when I see that sort of thing, I just think this is a place where a lot of consumers are going to be driving and parking, and I'm not sure that fits with some of the broader discussions we've had. So I think there are a few things to maybe look at there.
Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Oppose, motion carries. You want to see?
Ask a question about earlier. In terms of council engagement in this process as it moves forward, I would love to note, I think I should update the engagement plan to reflect that involvement, but, or maybe separate, but anyway, I think it would be great to have a sense, a little bit more sense about how that will work. And one of the challenges with this project is that it is so fine-grained that it can consume, if we all talk about all the issues, it could consume vast quantities of council's time. And so I don't know what the, which is partly why it's not in there as, you know, structured. But I would love to have any thoughts from council on how you would like to engage on that, because I'm certainly open to, outside of your receiving commentary on, you know, work that's done along the way, like updates, maybe that's a better way to do it, or, I'm not sure, but I would love to have any sense from council about what level of time you want to put into this, and then how we can use that effectively.
Perhaps, I know somewhere in your presentation, you have a list of the general topic headings, but when I look at these general topic headings, that might be not necessarily one at a time, but that might be the way to focus opportunities for council's interaction, our interaction. I look, for example, at improved bylaw usability, and one there that we received letters on is add major to business and professional office in several zones, downtown, tantalous, and so on. These are theme issues that we're talking about just now. So that one way to sort out how council might engage is to break it down by your themes that you've got about six or eight of them here. And that might be a way to make it manageable. And I think the things that come up are things that we are already discussing here today by those themes.
Councillor Rice, and then her.
Yeah, thank you. In my experience, when you get these sort of omnibus type of amendments, there's a lot of things that are really obvious that just don't generate a lot of discussion. And we tend to focus on a few hotspots. And I think to start it off, my only suggestion would be is to give a description of each one of the changes, and we can read through it on our own time. And then when we come to the first roundtable discussion like that, I think we'll probably focus fairly quickly on the ones that we think are sensitive and maybe deal with it that way. And that would probably guide the consultation and the engagement rather going forward, unless there's some other changes to some of the minor ones. But, you know, I think initially, we each be able to look at everything and then decide what we're going to have to talk about.
If we go back to the engagement, we have the engagement slide there, just reference it. Yeah, with this, I'm not sure if we, if we need to provide more guidance before you start phase one, but as the completion of each phase, so this is sort of essentially quarterly, we run according to the whole. I don't know that I would need, want to go, want to go much deeper down the rabbit hole than at that point as we move to the next, move to the next phase. And that would be my input as far as engagement. I mean, I would take opportunity to attend whatever the community open houses are, and we're obviously going to be engaging with the public just as we move about our days in the, in the community. But for as far as the formal engagement, I think that if we were sort of in, in between at the appropriate time and in all these, in all these steps, that would probably be enough for my comfort, my comfort level.
Certainly, you don't want council down in the wind with you.
Could be our time.
I think then we'll be working on this for two years. But I do think those open houses, that sort of thing should be in our calendar so that we're aware of them. I do think as we change phases, that we should understand what you learned in the first phase and what's planned in the second phase of engagement. And then for me, I think it's important to leave it to staff about how you want to engage with council on some of those that are more politically charged. I think those probably you don't want surprises with, so I think for some of those specific ones, it is important. What is our role as decision makers and, and as part of that engagement? So I'll lead back to you guys. Does that help?
That's great.
Okay. Thanks very much for that. Okay, so I didn't, that letter to, for Squamish River Watershed Society, because this is a committee of the whole, technically it's not fully endorsed by council, because we didn't do it at a regular business meeting. So right, this, a recommendation would go to the next regular business meeting, then we would approve it, but their deadline is the 18th, which is this Friday.
So we've got seven councils now, you can wave notice, first night to community charter and have a special, and then it's a radical motion.
So we're going to have a little special meeting now. So is I terminating this one? So I'm going to have a motion to terminate committee of the whole, moved by councillor French, second by councillor Rice, all those in favor? All those motion carries? Okay. And then a motion to wave notice.
Pursuant to section 94.
Pursuant to community charter, section?
I think it's 94, but I'll double check.
94, because we've got all the councillors present. Moved by councillor French, second by councillor Rice, all those in favor? All those motion carries? And so the motion is to confirm, is it?
That the District of Squamish support the Squamish River Watershed Society's funding application for the central estuary project. Is that still the name? That's the, she said similar to the last one, that's what the last one was. So this, the watershed?
Yeah.
Squamish? Rivers Watershed Society project, Squamish River project.
Yes. A letter of support for their grants to the Pacific Salmon Foundation as part of their community salmon program to continue the works on the Squamish estuary. So, motion to, do you have a question?
Question, yes. So the Squamish River Watershed Society has a project with two phases. Do I understand that this specifically concerns only phase one, does not approach into phase two?
No, this is about phase two as well. It includes replacement of the culvert along the training berm, realignment of spit, installation of intake across the spurline, and ongoing monitoring.
Well, it could be a little bit more clear. The reason why I'm asking this question is because this phase two of the project has an impact on the transportation corridor, and specifically an extension of it that was, is identified as a potential bar to lead in the future. And I've had several conversations with the Squamish River Watershed Society at the SEMC chair.
We are not making any decisions, councillor Emerson, about what is getting built where. This is merely a letter of support for them to apply for this grant. And they would do engagement through that phase two, so nothing's been decided.
So we are not endorsing?
We're not endorsing any...
Changing that transportation corridor in offering this letter?
We're not endorsing anything. We're endorsing their application for a grant. We support their ask for money to investigate this work in the Squamish estuary.
I'm still not satisfied it's clear enough or that there's enough understanding about the implications for the transportation corridor.
Do you want me to read it to you again?
Sure, please.
I am submitting a new application proposal to the Pacific Salmon Foundation as part of their community salmon program to continue the works we are proposing in the Squamish The proposal is pretty much consistent in language to the works we have been discussing, replacement of the culvert along the training berm, realignment of the spit, installation of intake across the spurline, and monitoring.
Realignment of the spit is phase two, and it does impact the transportation corridor, which is in our OCP and in the SEP agreement the district has signed off on. That's the issue.
Well, there's no design yet. There's no decisions been made. So you can choose not to support this motion if you so choose, but my understanding is that it's all up for discussion and...
My concern really is it has not been well discussed, and there has not been, there was a stakeholder meeting organized Squamish River Watershed Society on this, but it was gathering feedback, but the exchange of information has not gone where, as far as it needs to go. But I will be in support of this motion if it's only towards it.
Do you mean to council?
Well, council has signed off on a SEP land use plan, and council has an OCP that identifies it as a transportation corridor. So if we're going to realign the spit and change transportation corridor, that has some implications and also processes.
No, you said the engagement hasn't gone far enough. Do you mean specifically with our council?
I think also, but including Squamish estuary management committee, but also council. Yes.
I'll call a question. What?
Mrs. Correspondent, do I have it?
No, this is a late addition. We added it to the agenda late this afternoon. You weren't present. It was committee of the whole, so now we have to endorse that in a special meeting. It is asking the mayor to write a letter of support for their grant application. So this is not, is from Edith Toh. It's not to approve any alignment or anything, it's to approve their efforts to apply for a grant to continue their work in investigating the possibilities around the training berm, realignment of the spit, installation of intake across the spurline. Moved by councillor Stoner, second by councillor Rice. Any other comments? Call the question. All those in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Thank you. Move to terminate a special meeting. Moved by councillor Haver, second by councillor Stoner, all those in favor? Oppose, motion carries. All right. That. Councillor, can I just ask you to hang back for a second with your phones? I need to reschedule for Terry, so I wanted her to capture us all together. So let's let me go get them.
I'll go get yours.
Okay.
Do we need our phones, folks? For the 23rd?
Your calendar, your calendar.
Your calendar.
Mine goes in my home.
Oh. Well, you can tell us if you're free or not.
Yeah, we've got you. We can look at your phone. Go get yours. Is it paper? Is it on your wall?
Yeah, I have one.
Oh, I'm just... I'm not using that Cisco Pub thing.
What do you want, keep that in?
Oh, you should let IP folks know.
So the last version of this that I saw, it didn't have any of this specific contents,